Present.
Commissioner Blake. I believe she is present, but I didn't hear her. Her mic might have been off. Commissioner Blake. Okay, Commissioner Atkins. Commissioner Catherine.
Here.
Commissioner Lazarus.
Here.
And Commissioner Epperson.
Present.
Okay, you have 10 of 12 members present that does constitute a quorum.
Thank you. I would also like to recognize our Senator who is here as well, Senator Sam Jenkins. Thank you for your presence. At this time, if you would, please stand. Let us pray. Hast thou not known, hast thou not heard, that the everlasting God feigneth not? That there is no searching of his understanding. He giveth power to the faint and to them that has no might, he increases their strength. Even the youth grow weary, and the young men shall utterly fall. But they that wait upon the Lord shall renew their strength. They shall mount up with wings as eagles. They shall run and not be weary, they shall walk and not faint. God, we invoke your presence over this meeting today. Lord, we thank you for all that you have done and all that you will do, oh God. We thank you, Father God, that we would do the things that are pleasing and acceptable in your sight. We dare not do this life without you, God. And we thank you, God, and believe that it is so. And so it is. In Jesus Christ's holy name, I seal this prayer. Amen.
Amen.
Veterans and active duty military members saluting during the recitation of the Pledge of Allegiance would be appropriate, should you wish to do so. All others, please recite with your hands over your hearts. And we ask that everyone please remember our POW MIA's as we say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the life of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, I have several. What, you have those? Potential agenda additions?
Yes, ma'am. There are two that are listed on the agenda here. I don't, I'm not aware of any additional besides those two, but but should there be, this is the appropriate time to address them. Would you like me to go ahead and read the two that are listed?
Yes, please.
Okay. The first is a potential agenda addition to adopt a special resolution recognizing former Shreveport Mayor John Hussey. And the next is a potential agenda addition to adopt a special resolution commemorating the 100th anniversary of the Strand.
Okay, at this time, I would like to open for a public hearing for these potential agenda addition items, which are the special resolution recognizing former Shreveport Mayor John Hussey, and the special resolution commemorating the 100th anniversary of the Strand. Is there anyone here to speak in favor or against adding these agenda items?
Well, well done.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
John Glover, 9100 Walker Road, Apartment 217, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71118. I rise to speak in opposition of the additions, not based on their merit, but the procedure itself. When it is that a procedure is not followed, then you open the door for opposition. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in favor or against? Seeing none, I declare this public hearing closed. Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Parliamentarian Victor Thomas, and it's been seconded by Mr. Vice President Ken Epperson. Commissioner Thomas, would you like to speak on your motion?
Yes, I would. Thank you, Madam President. I did want to let my colleagues and the public know that I did receive these requests on Tuesday for events that were happening on Tuesday and Wednesday, and that's why they were not added on Monday as an agenda addition. To be more specific, Mayor John Hussey, as you know, was the first mayor during the the strong mayor form of government that separated us as a Cattle Parish Commission, as well as the city of Shreveport. And also, the other one was to celebrate the 100th anniversary of the Strand theater whose birthday is today. I'll also defer to legal to to address anything regarding legalities regarding this, these issues.
Commissioner Thomas, I when you say address regarding legalities.
And I apologize, ma'am, any implied wrongdoing.
Okay. What I would like to address is, first of all, I see that the resolutions are written on behalf of the undersigned people and that you've got three signatures on each of them. Commissioner Gage Watts is president, Commissioner Epperson is vice president, and yourself as parliamentarian. And you all, as individuals, do have the right to present things. I think the confusion here is, comes in because of what it is called. Because your charter specifies your resolutions need to be passed by a vote of seven. And so even though these are not even purported to be on behalf of the commission, I would say because they are styled as resolutions, they probably need to be ratified at some point.
Thank you. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you so much for that clarity.
Seeing no other discussion, please vote.
And Commissioner, okay, thank you. All right, so that, those will not be added to today's agenda, because it needs, it has to be added unanimously, and that did not reach that. That was seven in favor, four in opposition. So those will not be added today.
Next item.
And that brings us to
Yes, ma'am.
Citizens.
One second, Mr. Clerk. The Chair recognizes Attorney Frazier. I'm sorry, that didn't pull up in time for me to request to speak. What I would like to suggest or request is that the clerk put these on your first work session agenda in August, so that you all can advance them through your normal process, if that is what you wish to do. Also, I do want to point out that several Commissioners have spoken with me about giving some clarification to this process.
Absolutely.
And I think that can be done through your bylaws. So I'm going to be working to draft something for a presentation so that you all can amend your bylaws if necessary to kind of address situations such as these. And if you all have suggestions that you'd like me to consider in my drafting, please get them to my office as soon as possible. Thank you. Thank you, Attorney Frazier. Mr. Clerk, the citizens' comments.
Thank you so much. That brings us to citizens' comments, where citizens who'd like to address the Commission on any issue other than zoning are asked to fill out a comment card in the chamber foyer and return them to the box to my left. Comments are, individual comments are limited to three minutes. We do have a limit of 15 minutes per side on issues. And those that have been received have been presented to the President. Would also mention that, of course, during our process, we have public hearings for ordinances. So some people may have indicated that they were speaking for that.
Sure. And those that I have for the public hearing are on the pickleball, and I'm sure that they would like to speak during the voting process of that on the public hearing. Am I correct? If you're here to speak for pickleball? Okay, all right. At this time, I would like to call Irma Rogers.
Good afternoon. Do you need the name and address for the record?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Irma Rogers, 1920 Mischut Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71107.
Thank you.
To Madam Chair Watts, Vice President Epperson, and all of the other Commissioners, and to Ms. Erica Bryant and your administration. I'm here to bring some updates on some of the work that we've done within the past four years since the beginning of the pandemic. Because primarily, a lot of what we did and do had to deal with some of the ramifications from that. What I mean by that, senior socialization had to change to senior stabilization for about two and a half to three years. In other words, so many of our seniors were liable to COVID. So we made pandemic kits. And we spread them out from like Vivian to Keithville by different other organizations coming to us and asking for the monies that we had, not just from this organization, but from others. So we sent those wherever they were requested, from Cooper Road to Cedar Grove. Then after the seniors came out of that, and they were, what I mean by pandemic kit, they had tile cans of Lysol in them, they had gloves, they had a permanent mask, two throwaway masks, and sanitizers and wipes. That was a true pandemic kit, okay? They were, we had people still asking us for that. Then we came back in. Once we came back in, beginning last year, we came back to senior socialization, which is a once, once a month participation right now. And it does have medical ramifications from a local neurologist, who has told me, these meetings are really good for these seniors. They help to alleviate them from going into things like Alzheimer's and dementia, because they have an activity, they have things to look forward to. Now, regarding our educational process and the monies that we spend on education. Beginning in 2021, we started Summer Basics. At that time, we turned in data on about 99 children. We had more than that enrolled, but the pre and post data could only be given for the 100 or so that we actually tested pre and post. That data showed that going back to basics really matters. Right now, if you listen to our state superintendent, Dr. Kate Bromley, he has been touting basics. So these things have shown, I would just give you one example of one of the schools. All of the schools that we worked with, in other words, Pine Grove, Cherokee Park, and JS Clark, all of our elementary schools. JS Clark and Cherokee Park came out of the F status a year or so ago. Now, we have just received this data the last couple of days. Only the social studies additions are not here. But our local principal, who is Ms. Kylie Cotton, is reporting they have gained at least five points, which will bring them out of that F status. I think JS Clark last year was one point away from C status. And I believe Cherokee Park was close also. So the monies that we spend on these projects, you can see the differences by looking at what's happening within our schools. The things that we offer, not a lot of field trips, and when we do enrichment, it's a little different. We offer dance and theater, caring for your nails, basic karate. Mr. Basil does yoga for mixed group. We have mental health resources. A mental health nurse practitioner comes in and speaks to our children. Etiquette by Ms. Margaret Thomas and others. Those are the kinds of things that we do with the monies you give us. So I just want to tell you all, thank you so much, Madam Chair, and to my district commissioner, Mr. Young. We do want you to know, we do what we do with our monies that you ask.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers.
Madam Chair, point of, point of information, I'm not sure that Ms. Rogers ever actually said who we are. It's the MLK Community Development.
MLK Community Development Corporation.
I just wanted to make sure that the record reflected that. I know who you are, but the record does not. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. If you would, please check to see if your mic is on.
It says it is. It says it is.
Okay. I just want to remind everyone that you probably are going to have to speak into your microphones in order for the public to be able to hear you. If your voice doesn't naturally project like mine does, they probably can't hear you. So just wanted to remind everyone of that. Thank you. Okay, and I will call these comments for the pickleball at the appropriate time. The next card I have is Ms. John Glover. Is this the second time around, or is this on a different issue? Because I don't have a subject.
It's on a different issue. Again, John Glover, 9100 Walker Road.
Point of order, point of information, I'm sorry. Hold on just a second. Do, so we have a number of people who are going to be speaking about this issue. Are we going to divide the time between the ones who are for and the ones who are against?
Yes, and I'm assuming here, but I will do a poll on these actual cards that I have.
Yes, ma'am.
I do believe that they are in support of the pickleball. I'm not sure what Ms. Glover is speaking about, because she didn't include anything in her subject line. So as soon as I get that information from her of what she is speaking in reference to, then we'll be able to calculate accordingly.
All right, thank you, Madam President.
Madam President, per Commissioner Young's order, if this public comment is regarding pickleball, should I record the time to go into the combined time for pickleball?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Glover.
Again, John Glover, 9100 Walker Road, Apartment 217, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71118. I rise to bring to your attention again Agenda Item 8.2, the ratification for the special, excuse me, resolution for Senator Bernie Sanders. Again, it is not the merit of your decision that you made. It is the process that you all negated to get to this determination. I would ask that you all not ratify, because you did not follow your own procedures. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card I have is Carla Bunton.
Hello, everybody. Commissioners, Carla Bunton at 2524 Lakeway Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana. I know you guys are usually seeing my face here for compassion for lives. Today, I'm here to introduce to you guys a new online nonpartisan publication by the name of The Architects Gazette. I know you guys, maybe some of you haven't heard about it, and some of you have. Just want to let you guys know that we will be reaching out to you individually or collectively. The reason why we started the online, nonpartisan online publication, which is Architects Gazette, is because we do see here in the city of Shreveport, even in, just in this region, there is a gap in, you know, legislation with people understanding, especially our Generation Z's and our Generation Y's. And this publication is going to bridge that gap. We would like to speak with local officials here coming soon about legislation. Where are we going with legislation, so they can know? Like I said before, this is nonpartisan. We are looking to just get our Generation Z's and our Generations Y's. We want them to have an understanding. Sometimes even me as a Generation X does not have an understanding. So I just wanted you guys to know that I will be calling, someone from the staff will be calling. This is not a nonprofit organization. We're out here and we want our community to know. We want them to learn more. Well, Mr. Settle, it's what I'm talking about today, Mr. Settle. So.
Thank you.
Have a good day, sir.
Thank you.
Amen.
Mr. Settle, thank you. Madam Clerk, if you would, please allow Ms. Bunton the opportunity to reclaim her time. And I would also like to remind the audience, if you would, Mrs. CEO, make sure that a sheriff is in here as well, so that any outbursts, if you're not on to speak, we will not tolerate that. We will do this decent and in order. Thank you so much.
But by the way, this, like I said, it's a nonpartisan online publication. We will not be, you know, slander on anyone. This is not about white or black. This is about what's going on here in our community. Our Generation Z's and Y's, we do see a lack in, you know, a voting in those particular demographics. And we need them to understand, and I have been speaking with them, okay, in this community, about why they're not voting. Do they even understand what's going on here at the commission or the council, and they have no idea? So this news publication will be out there. I really wish that you guys do honor, you know, our request that we act to speak. Well, we would like to speak with everyone, not just anyone in particular, just so that we can get, you know, your thoughts, and you can help us with the Generation Z and Y. And once again, the name of it is Architects Gazette. Please take a look at it. It's a website. It will be soon, really soon, rolling into a mobile app. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. And again, I apologize for that outburst.
Madam President. Madam President.
The parliamentarian is recognized by the Chair.
Thank you. I would like to remind the public that even if you are not in our chambers, we do have an online citizens' comment card in which you're able to fill out as well. And I will read this from item number five of our agenda. Citizens who wish to address the Commission on any issue other than zoning, please fill out a comment card located in the chamber foyer and return this to the President or the Clerk of the Commission. Your individual comments are limited to three minutes. You are not required to speak to an agenda item. We prefer that it is related to an agenda item. But any item that you wish to address to this commission, other than zoning, you are willing, you are able to do so during citizens' comments. I'd also like to remind you that we are not allowed to engage in communication with you during citizens' comments. However, we can answer your questions that are directed to us during a public hearing. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Parliamentarian. The next cards that I have are all in reference to pickleball. And if you are in support of these, please let me know, or if you are in opposition, and if you would like to speak at the appropriate time during the public hearing. I have Megan McDaniel. Okay. Dr. Shelley Armstrong. Thank you. Sarah Nils. Thank you. Stacy Brown. Thank you. Edward Best. Okay, would you like to speak at this time or during the public comments? Okay. Mr. Best, if you would, please come up.
My name is Edward Best. My address is 637 Rock Hollow Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana, 7115. If you guys don't mind, I'll read from a prepared statement. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Edward Best, and I'm here today as a concerned citizen and a taxpayer of Cattle Parish. I want to speak out against the proposed $10 million investment in a pickleball facility. I don't have anything against pickleball. It's fun, it's a growing sport, and I'm glad people enjoy it. But spending $10 million of public funds on something that only benefits a small portion of our community is not a wise decision with our taxpayer dollars. We've got real issues in Cattle Parish. I think everybody knows that. Our roads need repair, our schools are underfunded, youth programs are already stretched thin as it is, and we are considering an item like a $10 million pickleball court. That $10 million could go towards solutions for these problems. It could support job training, community centers, safer neighborhoods, or infrastructure upgrades that serve everyone, not just a few people with paddles. I truly don't see how a $10 million pickleball court in southeast Cattle Parish will help a younger teen on MLK Drive, or North Shreveport, or a young person from Vivian getting involved in this sport. I just don't see how it, how it can, how it can help, okay? Let's be honest, pickleball courts are not expensive to build, on already existing infrastructure. They're not. Across the country, entire complexes are going up for a fraction of this price, and many communities are converting underused things like tennis courts. We have a plethora of tennis courts in the city of Shreveport and the parish, okay? All this stuff can be repurposed, and I don't see why that's not, that's not even being brought up. We don't need a luxury facility. We need practical, equitable investments. Wouldn't it be more feasible to convert the old tennis courts at Keithville Middle School, which is a Cattle Parish publicly funded park, if I'm not correct? Okay? Would it not be more feasible to repurpose the tennis courts out there? I was a baseball coach for 12 years. We practiced out there every single day, four, five, six days a week. I've never seen anybody use those tennis courts at Keithville Middle School. Maybe I'm wrong at this point, but nobody ever uses them. Why can't we repurpose those into the pickleball courts? I'm 100% for that, okay? So I don't, I just don't understand. Something like that, we could do for $50,000 to $100,000, not $10 million. Okay? Or how about entering into an agreement with the city that the parish will financially assist to convert some of the courts at Southern Hills to pickleball courts? Okay? Bill Cockle Park is another city park that could be repurposed into pickleball courts slash tennis courts as well. The basketball courts at these parish facilities that we already have are easy conversions. They can be used as basketball courts or pickleball courts. Okay? I just, I just, I don't understand. They can be multi-use courts for basketball or pickleball if they really want it, we really wanted them to. The YMCA already does this at their facilities. I'm a member of the YMCA. I'm not against this for the YMCA. I'm against using taxpayer-funded dollars to fund a $10 million item. It just makes no sense. If there's truly demand for a large pickleball complex, let the private sector handle this. Entrepreneurs and recreational businesses would gladly set up if it's profitable. Sorry.
Mr. Best, that's your time. I hope that you will stick around during the public hearing and hear some additional information about it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, Mr. Clerk, I would like to take the agenda out of order and move up on the Agenda 8.2 to ratify the special resolution for Senator Bernie Sanders.
Second.
Okay, in one moment, we'll have a voting item for you to take it out of order. Okay.
Okay.
How are these pads working?
The motion is to take 8.2 out of order.
Madam President, just to be clear, right now, you were asking us to vote on whether to take it out of order or not?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, and that motion carries with 10 in support, two in opposition. So we will now consider the special resolution item 8.2 to ratify a special resolution for Senator Bernie Sanders.
It's been moved by the Chair and seconded by Parliamentarian Thomas.
And that motion carries with seven in support, five in opposition.
Thank you. The Chair would like to move at this time to move back into the regular order. Does that pass by acclamation, or is there any opposition? Okay.
We're back in the regular session. The listeners can come over here. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Your mic is not on, Commissioner Atkins.
Okay, so we are back in regular session at this time. Did, just to be clear, I want to make sure we did not have any additional public speaker comments at this time?
We do, but they are going to speak during the public hearing.
Perfect, okay. So that brings us to visitors. We don't have scheduled visitors today, so we can't. We do have a visit coming up, but it will be under the administrator's report. So just wanted to clarify that.
Absolutely. I am perfectly fine bringing him up at this time.
So if you are all okay with bringing Senator Jenkins up at this time?
Yes. It is at the President's discretion. Speaking into my mic. Welcome, Senator Jenkins. Thank you so much for being here with us today.
All right, thank you, Madam President, to our Vice President Sam Jenkins, 2419 Kings Highway, Shreveport, Louisiana. I serve as one of your state senators from this area. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you today. I simply want to share some information from Baton Rouge with you. I see myself as a state legislator, but I also see myself as a co-laborer with local government. And I know how important local government is, having served on this body and also served on our city council. I've had the pleasure to work with many of you at different times on different projects. So I just want to commend this body as a whole for your leadership in this parish and a lot of the work that you are doing to make this parish a great place to live, to work, and to play. I work very diligently with Ms. Erica Bryant also in the administration, her team showing great leadership for our parish, and I can tell you it's held in very high regards down in Baton Rouge. Working with Ms. Valerie Jamison also, who I believe do some of your governmental relations work. She certainly let me know the needs of the parish and the information that the parish needs here. So we certainly enjoy working with her. I'd be remiss if I did not recognize my Commissioner, Lord Burrell. We always stay in contact about issues that affect the communities that we represent. I'm going to try not to be too long, but I did want to bring to your attention a number of issues, just starting with our budget. As many of you know, the so-called Big Beautiful Bill, I guess that's a matter of how you view it, has now left Congress and is headed to the President's desk, and he's committed to signing it on July the 4th. And I just want to talk a little bit about the impact of what that bill does and what that bill may do as it relates to the state of Louisiana and the people who live here in the state of Louisiana. I'm not here to make any kind of political statement on it. I'm talking about numbers. So I want to be clear about that. That bill proposes to cut nationwide $1 trillion towards Medicaid. A trillion dollars. It also proposes to cut $180 billion from SNAPs in a state like Louisiana. Our total state budget that we enacted for '25, '26 is at $47.9 billion. State funds represent roughly one half of the total, contributing $24.2 billion. The other half of our budget is federal funding, contributing $23.7 billion. That's over half of your state budget that comes from federal funds. And of that, $16.4 billion of that amount supports healthcare. And of that, $16.4 billion of that amount supports healthcare here in the state of Louisiana. Needless to say that me and my lawmakers down in Baton Rouge have some very serious concerns about the potential cuts to Medicaid and SNAP. Significant federal cuts could lead to a multi-billion dollar loss for Louisiana, severely impacting healthcare access for over 1.6 million citizens in this state. SNAPs, cuts to SNAPs will certainly present food insecurity for thousands of families, and many of whom live right here in northwest Louisiana. Our budget, 50/50 state and federal funds, and over half of that budget, over half of it, is based upon federal funds. I just want to try to make a point of the numbers and make sure that we understand what those numbers mean. The distribution of the budget, Department of Health is getting some of the biggest part of it at $23 billion. Department of Education is going to receive $6.5 billion. You've got multiple executive agencies that are going to receive a little over $5 billion. Higher education is going to receive about $3.5 billion. Roads and bridges, $699 million that will be going through the Department of Transportation and Development. Economic development, $283.7 million, and that will be going towards several economic development initiatives, and I'll talk about a few of those that may impact here in northwest Louisiana later here in my presentation. Higher education, $43.1 million towards their deferred maintenance and one-time expenses. Our Water Sector Commission is going to be receiving $75 million. That's very important money for our area, very important to a lot of these small towns in the northern part of the parish, because most of them are seeking to get that funding, not necessarily through capital outlay, but through the water sector program. And I know that I lobby very hard to make sure that we fund that water sector program. I want to talk about some other highlights that came from the budget besides just the numbers. The film tax credit, it is alive and well, effective July 1, 2025. It's going to offer up to a 40% credit, but it has a $120 million cap. New applications are not being accepted as of that date, which we just passed, but existing projects, existing projects including the G-Unit projects here in our area, will continue through 2030. We developed the Office of Entertainment and Industry Development within the Louisiana Department of Economic Development that will oversee the program. That's to give a little bit more flexibility to how the money is going to be spent and look at some of the details of plans that are being presented. Let me say to you, I've had an opportunity to meet with Mr. Curtis 50 Cent Jackson, his attorneys, and members of his team, and I am impressed with what was said to me and what I was able to see. If these things can come to fruition, I believe that you will be seeing and hearing soon that there will be some state effort to assist with bringing motion picture post-production here into our area. Speed cameras, I know that that was of some interest in our area. As of August 1, 2025, speed cameras can only be used in school zones, and there has to be very clear signage about their presence. There'll be no criminal fines of any kind from the speed cameras, and no negative credit reporting will take place. And we've also presented ways to make it a little bit easier for the citations themselves to be challenged by drivers. Urban revitalization is a subject that I wanted to bring to your attention. I want to commend this body, certainly commend my friend, Commissioner Greg Young, in helping to bring about what we call our State Land Banking Authority Act. This is landmark legislation for the state of Louisiana, and this body needs to be proud of. And I thank you for allowing me to be the author of that particular legislation. It will create a comprehensive framework for local governments, both municipalities and parishes, to establish land bank authorities. These are going to be quasi-public, nonprofit entities. And I want to point out, because I know there are some questions, that is enabling legislation. Ultimately, you as a body can say what authority you want your land bank authority to have. You're not going to be losing control of that. In fact, you will be the incorporators of these entities. So I know a lot of questions are coming forward. We need to work on the implementation of this, and I have been reaching out to the Louisiana Police Jury Association, who is very much interested in helping to make sure that we implement through some uniform fashion and answer questions such as what does it take to declare title and bonding issues? A lot of the expert questions that may be involved with implementing land banking is something that we need to be working on as a next step. But I assure you that this is being held by many around the state as a step forward to deal with the issue of blight in a uniform manner and in a manner that hopefully will help relieve what we think is about to happen. We changed our tax sale laws. Many people are no longer going to be interested in purchasing tax sale property. You're going to see parishes such as this, your inventory on adjudicated property is going to continue to grow. And so we need a means of repurposing this property, getting it back in commerce, and hopefully out for some development. And this legislation, bar none, helps that to happen. On the severance tax, there were no major changes. There were many of us wanting to try to bring some of that money back home to Caddo and DeSoto, but we couldn't get a lot of our colleagues to go along with it. I already talked about some of the federal cuts and concerns. I'm not going to go back into that. I don't know right now if we're going to be called back to some kind of special session to deal with this, but I do believe it's not going to be a matter of if, it's going to be a matter of when, because if those cuts go into place, we're going to need to try to take another look at our budget that we just passed, as well as the budgets going into the next fiscal year, to see how do we handle any kind of tremendous federal cuts that are coming our way. Teacher pay, we've seen some improvements in that area. Right now, the stipends are going to be back in place for teachers, $2,000 for certified teachers and $1,000 for support staff. However, we do have a constitutional amendment that is going to be coming up where we are trying to put in place now some permanent pay raises for teachers, $2,250 for teachers, and $1,125 being proposed for support staff. That's going to be dependent upon a constitutional amendment that needs to pass sometime in April of 2026 in order to restructure the education trust funds in order to have money to deal with a teacher pay raise. Another bill that I'm somewhat proud of, just to sound vain about it, is a bill that I brought that deals with municipal privileges for unpaid utility fees. I think we all have seen what has happened with a lot of these large apartment complexes when the water and sewer has been turned off and people are being displaced. So we were able to work with the city of Shreveport. We brought forth a bill now that will allow a water and sewer department to put a lien on these properties. I want to be clear, we're not talking about single-family rental properties. We're not talking about office buildings. The bill clearly defines large multifamily apartment complexes that operate off what you call a master service agreement. And we want to be certain that if for some reason that property is abandoned and it has hundreds of thousands of dollars owed to our municipality, that there are means for that money to be collected whenever the property is transferred. We went into the session, as you know, with a lot of concerns about insurance rates here in the state of Louisiana. I do not totally agree with a lot of the bills that came out. The governor has signed those bills. They're becoming law for the state of Louisiana, but there was one bill that I was supportive of, and that's the bill where we're giving our insurance commissioner the power now to reject excessive insurance rates. I agree with Governor Landry on that. That authority needed to have gone to our insurance commissioner. It would bring transparency to rates, it would bring transparency to what factors are being considered for rates, and it also would bring transparency to the loss ratio that auto insurance companies are experiencing here in the state of Louisiana. The inventory tax continues to be a moving target for whatever reason it may be. Let me as best I can try to see where that is at right now. One of the most anticipated changes came in the form of House Bill 366 regarding the inventory tax. Now, this bill does not eliminate the tax. It does not eliminate the tax statewide. It proposes a constitutional amendment, if approved by the voters in April of 2026, that will grant local governing authorities the option to reduce or eliminate the inventory tax within their jurisdiction for tax periods beginning after January 1, 2027. So we got this opt-in, opt-out scenario that's going on. If there is an immediate repeal by the parish, if there's an immediate repeal by the parish for exemption, the state will pay the taxing authorities three times the actual 2026 inventory tax collections. There would be a minimum payment of $1 million, up to a maximum payment of $15 million. If a parish phases in the exemption over a five-year period of time, the state will pay the actual 2026 collections, and they'll spread it out over that exemption periods. It's important to keep in mind that any exemption or reduction requires some agreement from the sheriff, the school board, and the parish governing authority to exempt the inventory tax. So there's parts of it that's in play, there's parts of it that's still waiting to see what may come out of some of these constitutional amendments that we'll be taking up. Speaking of constitutional amendments, there will be six constitutional amendments that need to be undertaken in 2026. One is going to raise the retirement ages for judges from 70 to 75. Another will allow legislative reclassification of the civil service positions, something once again I have some concerns about, but I'm not here today to make any kind of political statements, but we do need to look at changing, changes being made to our civil service system. Another will grant parish-level funding authority to the St. George Community School System. That's something that's happening somewhat down in the Baton Rouge areas. Another amendment is going to permit parishes to reduce or exempt the business inventory tax. We talked about that one just a few moments ago. That same amendment will have to redirect some of our education trust funds from our teachers' retirement system. And then a final amendment is going to look at increasing the poverty tax freeze program income limit from $100,000 to $150,000. The income limit is what that amendment will be addressing. Here locally, I work with the city of Shreveport. I want to first of all commend this parish commission for your contributions and the work that you've been doing to make SkyWest Airlines comfortable in this area. I saw that from afar, I saw all the smiling faces, and I think we have a lot to smile about if SkyWest Airlines can bring their meats in the space of this area. I work with the city of Shreveport with their capital outlay. We were able to usher through a capital outlay for $55 million. $5 million of that will be a cash outlay. So I just want you to know that the state is joining you as a parish, as well as the city, to make sure that we are all doing our part to bring those jobs to our area here in northwest Louisiana. A state office building, I'm sure that Ms. Bryan is tired of looking at her window and seeing that skeleton of a building over there. I want to report to you that that work is beginning this month. We're going to go back now and get the building finished, try to make sure that it's completed by 2027. That was a cost overrun, and we had to get some more money to come in and try to finish the project, but I do want you to know that that is back on track and we are moving forward. All of our local college campuses here, Sussler, LSUS, the Med School, Northwestern Nursing School, Technical College, BIPSY, all of them are going to be receiving some additional funding for classrooms. They'll be receiving some additional funding for security and for builders and things that they need. So we meet with these institutions often, and we want to make sure that they have all that they need to make sure that these institutions stay viable here in our area. I talked about some of the villages and towns in the northern part of the parish. I want to make sure that you know that we have money in the budget to help them with infrastructure needs and with their water and sewer maintenance and construction. That's just a few of the highlights for what we did down in Baton Rouge. I know that each of you know me and know how to reach me. I want you to know that you can reach out to my office for any information that you're readily trying to get your hands on down in Baton Rouge. I just want to once again commend this body for the work that you are doing. I'm very proud to say that I'm from Caddo Parish, and a big reason I'm proud to say I'm from Caddo Parish is because of what I see this body is doing here in our parish. I want to commend our entire legislative delegation from here in northwest Louisiana. We may have some political difference on some issues, but I want to assure you, we work together when it comes to infrastructure issues and issues of that nature, and we support each other as much as we possibly can to make sure that resources out of Baton Rouge is coming here to northwest Louisiana. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Thank you, members, for this opportunity to share this information with you, and please let me know if there's anything that we could do for you and your constituents down in Baton Rouge.
Thank you so much. Senator Jenkins, I just want to thank you for your efforts in keeping us informed of what's going on in our communities and our local economy. We appreciate the transparency, bringing us in to be a part of this conversation, as well as accepting our legislation to hand to you and your carrying out the work. I know that that was not an exhaustive list, but that was a great recap of the work that you have done, and we're so grateful to have you as our representative on the state level.
Thank you, Madam.
Absolutely.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir. Are the boards not working?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Commissioner Burrell, and before you speak, is there anyone else who would like to speak to Senator Jenkins? Commissioner Gregory Young? Okay, they're working now. Commissioner Burrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Senator, for coming and giving us that information, given the fact that we don't seem to have much of any town halls, especially congressional town halls, has been absent in our area. My concern as a former legislator, I recognize the work that you all have done on a state level, but what concerns me even more so is this big beautiful bill that we are talking about, because the state has not felt the effect of that yet. So if it has not felt the effect of that, even with the legislation that you all have passed, do you foresee having to have a special session to go in to address some of these shortages? Because as you said, 40% of our budget in the state is federal, and a lot of cuts have been made. So that is what keeps me up at night.
I do understand. I don't think it's a matter of if, it's a matter of when. We're certainly going to lead that up to the governor and the legislative leadership as to when we may need to go into some kind of session to look at it. We've been keeping an eye on the progress of the bill as it has worked its way through Congress, and as I said, and I gave you the numbers a few moments ago, those are some large cuts, and I'm here to tell you, some of your poor states, such as Louisiana overall, could suffer some severe blows if we do not go back in and try to make some kind of adjustments. And what those are going to be, I really don't know, Commissioner, but I do know we're going to need to look at how do we make up losing federal matching dollars that we definitely need in this state if they are taken away.
Well, I would like to see some of your other colleagues on the other side of the aisle, as they call it, to come in and address the issue too. I appreciate all that you're doing. I know a lot of them, but there's two sides to this coin, and we need to know what we are facing.
Exactly.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrell. Commissioner Gregory Young?
Thank you, Madam President. Senator Jenkins, I just want to take this opportunity to really thank you. You know, I'm someone that has been part of this community for a long, long time, and often throughout my life, I've been very critical of our politicians, and I still remain critical of politicians. But you've come to exemplify the kind of leadership we need in our community. I think the thing that I find most striking about your leadership style is your accessibility. You don't sit on some lofty perch, aloof, just warming a chair, but you've been engaged from the first time that I've talked to our legal department about getting together with you. I know you remember the day myself and Attorney Bernstein, who's not with us anymore, he's retired, you were very eager to listen. And when I first, you know, became part of this august body, I recall how the commission, when it was a police jury, when it was first set up when Caddo became a parish, that we weren't called commissioners. Back then, we were called judges. And I think the most important quality of a judge is the same quality that you have, an ability to listen, and you listen very attentively, and you took our idea that was And you listen very attentively, and you took our idea that was formed in Economic Development Committee and that was passed by this commission. You took it and you ran with it, and I really do appreciate that. You know, long after you and I have left this stage, you know, people will remember you for that. And I also want to take this opportunity to thank our administrator, Ms. Bryant. You know, she has been a strong advocate of this action from the time that we presented it. And again, I would be remiss if I didn't also associate all of my colleagues have been on board. It's very easy to lose. It's very easy to lose. Any fight, any battle, it's very easy to lose. It takes effort to win. And this past legislation that's become part of Louisiana law and is applicable to all parish and municipalities in Louisiana is an example of what can happen when we work together. It takes effort. The easiest thing we can ever do is to lose. It takes no effort to lose. It takes effort to win. And forever you will be identified as someone who gave us a tremendous win, and I thank you for it.
Thank you for those kind comments, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Young. Commissioner John Paul Young?
Thank you, Madam President. Senator Jenkins, thank you so much for being here to tell us all your accomplishments and the state legislature's accomplishments this year. I want to echo and expand on Commissioner Gregory Young's comments regarding the land banking. I told you before in person, you're our hero for pushing this through. It's something my neighborhood desperately needs, and our city and our parish, we've seen are now facing a sort of depopulation crisis. And in order to turn that around, we need people with deep pockets, like the parish government, to step in and restore our neighborhoods to livability and get them back into commerce. And I just want to say what a privilege it is to have you as our representative and you as the person who wrote and passed the bill that is now the law that allows us to do that. And I hope that we can meet to discuss in detail how you envision the implementation of this law, because we're going to be starting more or less from square one, and you're an important part of the brains behind it. And so we would love to have your opinion and your advice about that. I know that you're a great legal mind, and I appreciate all the work you've done. And I hope that you'll do a little more work with us to make sure that we get the ball rolling in the right direction. And I thank you also in advance for that.
And thank you for those kind, Ms. Commissioner Young. And as I stated, the implementation phase is the next phase that we go in. I know that we are already having some talks along those lines. We're going to bring in expertise from around the state that's needed to make sure that we do it and we do it right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Senator Jenkins, also, is there going to be a copy provided to us so that we will have the recap that you provided today to share with our constituents?
Absolutely, yes. We could get that out to the clerk. I'm sure the clerk will get it to all of the commissioners.
Thank you so much. I have Commissioner Ron Carthor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's an honor, Senator. As I sit here and process some things way back, not only as a senator, not only as a representative, not only as a city council person, not only as a parish commissioner, but just, I would like to say as a friend. You know, throughout your travels, I've been following you, and you know, being in the greatest fraternity in the world makes a big difference too, of which we both are. It's really been a pleasure to look at your anti-political move throughout. The thing is, as previously stated, you know, the most important thing is that you haven't stopped. There's been some things in your way that you could have just gave up and just pumped the brakes and stopped. But in my observation, all that did is motivate you to run harder, faster, and longer. And I, as a friend, as a frat brother, as a commissioner, thank you very much for everything that you're doing, have done, and going to do.
Thank you for those kind comments, Commissioner.
Thank you, Senator.
And thank you all. Have a good meeting.
You too. Enjoy your weekend. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you very much. And that brings us to adopting regular session minutes, where you do have minutes from your June sixteenth regular session.
Been moved by the chair and seconded by Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Jones, would you like to speak on your motion? All right. Please vote. We're voting on the regular session minutes adoption.
And Commissioner Burrell is absent. Okay, and that motion carries with eleven in support and none in opposition. And brings us to section eight, which is special resolutions. We've already addressed eight point two, but we have eight point one to start with, which is to, I'm sorry, it's the special resolution for LaShawn Benita Harley Hill. Would you like me to read the other items?
I have a motion on the board by Commissioner Stefan Jones and seconded by parliamentarian Victor Thomas. Commissioner Jones, would you like to speak on your motion?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to move to englobo and adopt eight point one, eight point three, eight point four, eight point five, and eight point six with any presentations that need to be made.
Okay. Commissioner Ron Carthor? Okay. Seeing no one else on the board, please vote.
And there we go. And that item is adopted with ten in support, one in opposition, and one absent. And that brings us to communicate and committee reports, where we have an administrative response to information requests from commissioners, which this week, because of your extended time period between this and your next meeting, will also include the presentation of your June financials, which you should have a copy of at the desk.
Thank you. Mrs. CEO?
Good afternoon, commissioners.
Good afternoon.
As you know, Mr. Kevin Lawrence is retiring July twenty fifth, and this is his last commission meeting since we will not have any more commission meetings for this month. So we wanted to recognize Mr. Lawrence today and wish him well in his future endeavors and present him with this plaque. So, Mr. Lawrence, if you could come forward.
Thank you, ma'am.
And the plaque reads, "Congratulations on your retirement, presented to Kevin Lawrence. In sincere appreciation for your twenty five years of dedicated service to the citizens of Caddo Parish, you have done an exceptional job in managing the operations of the facilities and maintenance department. Your knowledge and insight have been an invaluable asset to the parish of Caddo. We hope that you enjoy your well-deserved retirement." Thank you.
Thank y'all very much.
Director Lawrence, you are more than welcome. Congratulations.
Yes, ma'am.
It is certainly an honor to be able to give you your flowers while you can smell them.
Yes, ma'am.
We've had many great conversations. You have been a valuable asset to this organization, and you will be truly missed. Who's going to light up all of the courthouse for me now?
Well, now that you mention it, we have a brand new set of lights that were recently installed with better controls. Now, we don't have individual light controls, so we can do Texas street side or Mylum street side, any color you want.
Wonderful. I wonder who initiated that. But again, congratulations, you and your beautiful wife. Enjoy your retirement. Enjoy your life. We hope that you will come back and see us sometime.
Still got family in town, so we'll be back. And I want to come back and see the nature park when it starts to open. As a matter of fact, my brother, if I may indulge just briefly.
It is. It is your moment.
I am very proud today to have my beautiful wife Andrea with me.
Hey, Ms. Andrea, please stand up.
My middle granddaughter, known as the boss, Valentina. And then my brother Eddie and his fiancee, Mary Helen. Who we hope they're soon to be married, and they're thinking about using the Nature Center for their venue.
Oh, absolutely beautiful.
But it's been an absolute honor to work for the parish. You know, it's not very often you get to do what you love, and I was blessed to be able to do that.
Awesome.
And so it's just, it's been great, and the guys and gals in F and M are what made it happen. It wasn't me, it was them.
Right.
They're where the rubber meets the road. They get all the credit. I just happen to be there to annoy them every day.
Well, you've done a great job with it. Great leadership and a great team begins from the top and flows down. So it was you two.
Well, thank y'all very much.
You are very welcome. Commissioner Atkins?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Lawrence, I just want to thank you for your twenty five years of service. Wanted to thank you for always being there when we called, and thank you for keeping the lights on. We appreciate you, and we hope you enjoy your retirement.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, madam.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Commissioner John Paul Young?
Thank you, Madam President. Kevin, congratulations on your retirement. When I first became a commissioner, I remember you were the happiest, most smiling director of all. And I hope that you keep your same good spirits throughout your retirement. You seem like a really young guy. I don't know how old you are. Don't tell me. But I hope and I pray that you have many, many golden years to enjoy. And are you moving somewhere?
Yes, sir. We are moving to Florida.
Ooh.
What part of Florida?
Andrea's been away from her family for a long time, so now they're all down there in a place called The Villages. It's a retirement.
Oh, yeah, I know some people there.
And so we're moving down there where she can be with her family now, and I can play golf.
Fantastic. Well, enjoy, enjoy your retirement in the Sunshine State.
Absolutely. Thank you.
We'll miss you.
Vice President Efferson?
Kevin, we appreciate the service you provided throughout those twenty five years. I like the way that you came up through the ranks.
Yes, sir.
And you never was one to say, "I can't." You always find a way, if it was legal, to make it happen.
Yeah.
And that's what it's about. That's what it's about.
Yes, sir.
Good employees are about. So wish you a wonderful, wonderful retirement. And I'm going to get you a card like I gave Chuck Wilson.
Commissioner Ron Carthor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Lawrence, I'd just like to say it's been indeed an honor to work alongside you. And I think the longest conversation we ever had was at the Nature Center when we were touring it. But the thing is, the elation that you shared about your retirement, I mean, it just bubbled through. And you know, we talked about, how do you know when it's time? You know.
Yes, sir.
And the point being, I too wish you and your entire family a awesome, awesome retirement as you continue to go forward. But don't stop now. Just play golf. Do something else.
Oh, no, we'll.
All right.
We'll stay busy.
All right. Enjoy yourself. Thank you.
Again, congratulations, Mr. Lawrence. Enjoy your retirement.
Thank y'all very much.
All right. Mrs. Bryant?
That concludes the administration report. I'll take any questions at this time.
All right. You on the board? No? Okay. See, no commissioners on the board. All right. Communicates and committee reports. Right? I have Vice President Ken Efferson?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to direct this to administration or legal in particular. The behavior that was demonstrated by the gentleman out there when Ms. Bunton was speaking, that's not the first time, I think, I've seen an outbreak like that from that person. And you know, I was just reflecting back during the playoffs with the Indiana Pacers and the Oklahoma City Chiefs. Tyrese Halliburton's dad had came out on the floor and kind of acted, and he was suspended. So is there anything that we can do for persons that come down here and display bad behavior?
Commissioner, I will, as I'm working on that other issue in your bylaws, I think I had presented some other information as far as your bylaws and rules that could be adopted to do that. So I'll make sure to bring that back to the committee as well.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. And if you would, if a member of staff would, please close that staff-only signs back off, because they are open for security purposes. Commissioner Ron Carthor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to say that the Long Range Planet and Special Project Committee had a meeting today, which went very well. And primarily, what we discussed was the fee schedule for twenty twenty six budget, which if you don't have a copy, everyone will be getting a copy of. And we recommend it, as a body, to submit it to the entire body for the month of August. Secondly, I had the opportunity to attend the oath of office for Boja Parish Mayor and some of the elected officials there, and it was very ceremonious, and I truly enjoyed meeting them. And I look forward to us extending our hand across the river as well, so we can do what we can do publicly together. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner John Paul Young?
Thank you, Madam President. Administrator Bryant and Attorney Frazier, I had a question. Several constituents have asked me. And I wonder if perhaps you're planning to address it in the bylaws that you mentioned, Attorney Frazier. But I wanted to ask if you could share with commissioners and also, in a form perhaps that's shareable with the public, what the difference is between a resolution and a special resolution? Because I actually can't express the difference very well myself. So I suppose that there are many other people who do not know with confidence what the difference between those is. And I'm not asking you to explain it now, but I would love to have that information in a way that we could eventually share. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner John Paul Young, and I do have that to discuss later on in our agenda. Commissioner Parliamentarian Victor Thomas?
Thank you, Madam President. Due to us having an extended period between our next meeting, as you know, they always say there's nothing to do here. I would like to address the public and provide some information for some upcoming events. Of course, the farmers market is going to be this Saturday from eight to twelve. They will be featuring a summer car show this Saturday, as well as a performance by Delantrelle Thompson. I encourage all citizens to please go to the farmers market. We have a lot of local farmers and craft makers that will be present there. When, please go and support them. Also, I want to let you know that on July the twelfth, the Shreveport Bowser Film Industry Meetup will be held at the Robinson Film Theater. This is a free event and open to the public. It provides an opportunity for you to network, learn, and be a part of the movement, building more film production in our area. I also want to say congratulations again to those individuals that will be receiving the Valencia High School Legacy Scholarships. This weekend will be the, I'm sorry, next weekend will be the Valencia High School reunion, as well as the Stoner Hill Day. That is a weekend-long event. They have events going on from Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and I welcome you to be able to join in with them as they celebrate the value of community. Also, on June the second through July the thirty first, pull up and get involved. We have a variety of different sports camps and clinics that offer the safe summer nights through our Parks and Recreation in conjunction with the Caddo Parish, the Sheriff's Office, the City of Shreveport, and PCI. They have a lot of low-cost programs from ages three to twelve. Also, the Line Dance Under the Bridge will be held on July the sixth, that's Sunday, from two to six. It's a free family event. They will also be giving away school supplies. They will have food trucks available, a kids' fun zone, and pop-up shops. This is in conjunction with the Spar Bally's, ninety nine point seven, and the G-Spot. They will be, it will be hosted by Mr. Three Feet, and they will have a special guest, Mr. DJ Cupid. Also, on tomorrow, the Shreveport Regional Arts Council will be having the KCBS Three Freedom Fest twenty twenty five, featuring the band Front Cover. This will be downtown in the Riverview Park Amphitheater. That's at six oh one Clyde Fant Parkway. The event is from six to ten. The band starts at seven twenty, and the fireworks start at nine o'clock. On Saturday, July nineteenth, I'd like to thank our Parks and Recreation for working with the Trey Lester Football Camp, put on by Lighthouse Youth Foundation of North Louisiana. As you know, we have a group of talented collegiate football players here, and they have not yet reached NFL status, but they felt like they wanted to give back to the community nonetheless. And so this summer, they will begin their inaugural football camp. That's July the nineteenth from nine to twelve. It's going to be held at Booker T. Washington High School. And it's a free youth football camp for ages eight to thirteen. Not only that, the Aloha Hawaiian Knights will be held in the Far End District, hosted by eleven events. That is July the thirteenth, twenty twenty five, from six thirty to ten thirty, five twenty nine Texas Avenue. They'll have music games, indoor and outdoor seating. They'll have music games, indoor and outdoor seating. If you'd like to be a vendor, you can contact Lauren at 318-703-2886. On tomorrow at 7:00 a.m., the 2025 Firecracker 5K Race for Research will be at Mall St. Vincent, 1133 St. Vincent Avenue. The registration for race day is going to be $40 and it begins at 7:00 a.m. The nonprofit resource for, the nonprofit Institute for Administration and Research will be having a grand opening on Wednesday, July the 16th at 1:00 p.m. The Downtown Shreveport Art Walk will be Wednesday, July the 9th at 5:00. That's going to be from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. And I also want to say and address that I did attend yesterday the birthday celebration for the Shran Theater. As you know, that is one of the jewels here in downtown Shreveport. It was one of the first Sanger Theaters built by the Sanger Brothers. If you know the Sanger Theater down in New Orleans, it really is a great piece of history that we have in our community. It was the first building downtown, in downtown Shreveport to have air conditioning. It's really cool to find out about that and many other different details about the Shran Theater. And I'm really glad that they celebrated their birthday. What made it very unique about that event is that not only did they just make it about their birthday, but what they did was they hosted 50 new American citizens. Those citizens, instead of being in the courthouse, they had a full court proceeding at the Shran Theater in which they were naturalized on the stage and became U.S. citizens. They participated in the pledge. They read different items from the Constitution. And it was a beautiful sight to see. I don't think anything like that has ever been done. But I'm really, really thankful that I got a chance to participate in that, as well as on Tuesday where we commemorated the 190th anniversary of the Caddo Treaty. The importance of the Caddo Treaty is what gave us rise to even have our community, where the American government collaborated with the Caddo Indians to sell 1 million acres. They sold that land for $87,000. Now, I'm sure Commissioner Atkins can kind of figure out quickly what that equates to in today's money, but a million acres for any price. A million acres for any price, I think, is a huge buy and a huge bargain, especially for $87,000, no matter what the comparison is. But it was a really beautiful experience, as well as to honor former Mayor John Hussey. He has done some really great things in our community. He faced a lot of different challenges and he faced them very well. And I look forward to those resolutions, which I presented to them on yesterday, being ratified in August. Other than that, Madam President, I'd like to say Happy Independence Day to everyone. And I do want to address something else because it was brought up and it wasn't in the public. I'm not a perfect person. And when I make a mistake, I do like to correct that mistake. And I like to correct the mistake publicly, especially if I made that publicly. There was an issue regarding when we adopted the Pride Month Resolution. During that time, there was an individual who was speaking regarding that and they started discussing something regarding Job Corps. I erroneously made the distinction between agenda items during citizens' comments. I do want to say that, to my credit at that time, I did allow that person to reclaim their time. I was informed later on afterwards that citizens can address us regarding any issues, not just agenda items. So I would like to issue a public apology, although I did allow her to have her time at that time to her. And that is what the outburst was in reference to today. So that's why I wanted to make sure I clarified that for the public. If I make a mistake in public, I would like to make sure that I atone for it in public. Thank you.
Thank you, Parliamentarian Thomas. Commissioner Grace Blake.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to share that, thank you for sharing all of the community events going on. We do have so much wonderful things happening throughout our community and we have incredible local talent. And I wanted to share that there are three community theaters in Shreveport that all have musicals going on this month. Emmett Hook has Fiddler on the Roof. Stage Center has Hairspray. And the Shreveport Little Theater has Guys and Dolls. So please take an opportunity and go see some local entertainment. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Ken Efferson.
I wanted to remind everyone that today, the Caddo Parish Citizen Disaster Response Review and Recovery Committee, we formally recognized our information booklet. And I would ask that all citizens that are watching or in the audience that does not have a copy, very valuable and resourceful information for basically every aspect of any situation you may encounter during a disaster, tornado, hurricane, flood, and ice storms, things of that nature. So please go to caddo.gov and look it up. You can pull a copy off of it. You can also scan the QR code and share it. And Madam President, I would be remiss if I did not commend you on the way that you are handling this position as president, and especially Monday's meeting. I've been here going on 27 years. I've served as the president twice. I've been through what you've gone through.
Thank you.
But you have handled it expertly, fairly, honest, and strenuous as you should have, displaying whatever powers you have in this particular position. Oftentimes, people would think that a woman is in a certain position, that they had to be run over. But you held your ground. You did it articulate. You know what you're talking about. And you go by the rules and the regulations and continue the good work.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Thank you so much. Commissioner Stephanie Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. I come today with a heavy heart to this body, asking us to sit down and think of more comprehensive ways to defend women who are victims of domestic violence. Rochelle Lewis, who was 44 years old at the time of her death this week, was a former resident of Caddo Parish. And to her and her estranged husband, decided to separate. She moved back to Haynesville and was killed on July 1st by her estranged husband in front of her two children. Her children are 13 and 15 years old. He was on a restraining order and he had on an ankle monitor. And I just don't know. I've spoken about this before and y'all know how I feel about domestic violence. The trauma that I've had to deal with, not with any particular family member, but a very close friend who was killed by her boyfriend, who she was trying to get away from and had a restraining order on. We've got to figure out, hey, Senator Jenkins got out of here before he could hear this, but we've got to figure something out to do better. I have a great admiration for women. I was raised by a single mother and my aunt, who made sure that I was able to become the man that I am now to the best of their ability. And it just pains me and I've been troubled all day trying to keep on, you know, a happy face. But I am heartbroken about this situation. And I didn't know any other opportunity to speak on it, but now, and I wasn't going to say anything. But I think something needs to be said because, you know, I have this platform that I guess doesn't mean a whole lot, but maybe it does. I don't know. But since I have this platform, I want to bring it to everybody's attention that we've got to, we've got to do more. We've got to figure this out. This isn't right. These children should not be spending this holiday without their mother. They should not have lost her in such a tragic way. And I thank God that he protected them in that moment because it could have been an entire family. And so I hope that we can figure things out. I don't know. I guess that's a conversation we'd have to have with the DA's office as well. Whomever needs to be at the table to have the conversation that this should not be happening to women of any color, of any background. It should not be happening to our children. They should not have to experience this. And so I hope as a community that we can come together. You know, a couple of weeks ago, last month maybe, we honored Patrina Jenkins. And this is the type of work that Patrina did. You know, Patrina dedicated her life to fighting for domestic violence victims up until her untimely passing. And this is why we recognize someone, you know, such as her, who invested some of her own money to try to fight for women who did not have a voice for themselves. And so in the spirit of whatever we may do, a lot of times with resolutions, agree or disagree, most of the time, I can speak for myself at least, and some of the others are trying to bring awareness to some of the work that's being done in our community when we honor people like Patrina Jenkins through those resolutions so that the public can know what's going on, not to just be aware of what they're doing, but to join in in the fight and to partner with these organizations that are dedicating their lives to give us a better quality of life. This points to a good quality of life. Being able to move on from a bad situation and still be safe in trying to start a new path for yourself. And that's simply what she was trying to do. She moved back home to Haynesville so she can start over, so that she can have a different future than what her past looked like. And she still didn't have enough protection, even after all the measures that were taken. And so I don't, I don't know what has to happen, but I'm just bringing this to everybody's attention today. And I hope that you all wouldn't mind working with me to try to come up with some legislation that's probably going to have to happen at the state level. But I'm asking us to, to put parties aside. This is a problem that affects every community, affects every political party. It affects everybody. And so whatever the climate is, I don't really care. Y'all know how I am. I'm not going to give you a sermon today. I had one, but I reserve that because I want you to take the seriousness of what I'm saying and hear my heart, that we all, all 12 of us, need to come together and put something together to get state legislation on top of this and make this a legislative priority for us to protect the women of our community. Because at the end of the day, when it comes down to the polls every year, the women are the one who always push us across the finish line. When you're trying to get elected, it's the women out there that are voting. It's the women out there that are canvassing. It's the women that are being the backbone of our community that show dynamic strength and get things done when many people are making excuses. So the least we can do is protect the greatest gift that God has given to man, and that's a woman. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. And I would just like to encourage you to add that as an agenda item for your next juvenile justice meeting. We went through a similar situation and thank God I was able to get my cousin out a year to date, today. So I know and my thoughts and my prayers are definitely with her family as well as with you because I understand how that can be traumatic again for you as well. So to the public, we just want to say that you do have our prayers and our condolences and our commitment to bring better change for domestic violence survivors, as well as those who are worrying right now. Mr. Clerk, I don't have any other commissioners on the board to speak, but I would like to ask my colleagues if we could, I heard that there were several people here for confirmation and I would like to move that item up if possible, if that passes by acclamation to confirm Maurice Carson as the Director of Facilities and Maintenance? Okay? No opposition? Okay. At this time, Mrs. Bryant.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioners, it's with great pleasure that I recommend to you Mr. Maurice Carson as the Director of Facilities and Maintenance, effective July 26, 2025. Mr. Carson currently serves as Assistant Director of Facilities and Maintenance. He also, Mr. Carson, if you want to come forward. He also has grown up through the ranks, having began his career with Caddo Parish in 2009 as a maintenance tech. He then served as manager and supervisor at the Caddo Corrections Center before becoming the Assistant Director of Facilities and Maintenance. Mr. Carson holds an HVAC electrical and manufacturing certifications. He has worked well alongside Mr. Lawrence and also provides every assistance with a pleasant attitude. We could call upon him at any point. And we thought that for continuity of this department and to keep the service that you all have come to expect, that Mr. Carson would be the most logical choice to serve as Director of Facilities and Maintenance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bryant. Mr. Carson, before you speak, we're going to take care of some business. We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Stephanie Jones and it's been seconded by your stoolie, the chair. Commissioner Jones, would you like to speak on your motion? All right. See no one else on the board?
And just for the record, this is item, that we are taking out of order. This is item 20.1.
Correct. Thank you. Please vote.
Okay, and that motion carries with all 11 votes in favor, none in opposition, and one absent.
Congratulations. Mr. Carson, if you would?
Yes. First of all, you know, I have, this is, I appreciate and thank my administration for having the confidence in me to continue to move this facilities and maintenance department forward. You know, I've had great leadership with Kevin Lawrence. He's done a great job. And I definitely appreciate all he's taught me. I am a humble person. I know that you all really expect great things from all the departments. And I try to make sure that we do things accordingly and in order. You all support the needs that we have through the asking of administration and what we ask administration to provide us to where all our facilities are well taken care of. And our citizens, and our constituents, when they come to our facilities, they see money well spent. So we do all we can to make sure that we provide a great service. You know, we have a great team of technicians, environmental service techs that take care of our buildings with great honor and respect. And we appreciate all that you all have, do for us to make sure that happens. And I just thank you for the consideration and the acclamation and approval for mine. Thank you.
Thank you. And congratulations, Director Carson. If there were any commissioners who were on the board to speak, your board is not working right now because we've already voted, so.
I'll just say, Madam President, that somebody's got to help former director Kevin Lawrence. His smile is, he can't stop smiling.
Maurice is the best guy in the world.
All right. Vice President Efferson, are you on the board? No? Okay. All right. All right.
Okay, that, so as I understand it, we're back in regular order now?
Yes.
Okay. So that brings us back into regular order. And at this point, do we have a president's report or?
Sure.
Okay.
Yes, I just, I had a couple of things that I wanted to address today and some of them have already been addressed by our senator, who gave a report on what is actually going on, on the state level, as well as the federal level. I know that everyone is aware that the United States is actually on fire right now. And people could care less about some of the things that we're discussing because they are thinking about how they're going to feed their children, if they're going to have shelter, if they're going to have healthcare. So we are definitely in for the fight of our lives. And I do encourage us as colleagues and as commissioners to whatever differences that we may have, that I'm grateful in advance and hopeful that we can put them behind us because there is real work to do. As I too have a mid-year recap, I wanted to say as we reach this midpoint of 2025, Caddo Parish has celebrated a series of impactful milestones and continued progress that reflect the parish commitments to leadership, sustainability, community engagement, and cultural enrichment. In January, it was mentioned by Senator Jenkins again about the land bank legislation, as well as the living wage increase for Caddo employees. We started off the year by selecting new leadership for Caddo Parish Commission. And this transition marked a renewed focus on transparency, innovation, and community-driven governance, as the commission set priorities for 2025. In March, we were awarded the Keep Louisiana Beautiful Grant. In a major environmental win, Caddo Parish was awarded a Keep Louisiana Beautiful Grant to bolster anti-littering initiatives that was started by our Citizens Review Committee Chair, Vice President Ken Efferson, which this grant supports efforts to enhance community education, litter prevention, and cleanup programs throughout the parish. Of course, we celebrated Women History Month. And in April, the MLB Network visits Caddo Parish. We hit a home run. We hit a home run in April with a visit from the Major League Baseball Network. That's a big deal, shining a national spotlight on the region. The visit highlighted local talent and celebrated the role of sports in uniting communities. In April, we celebrated Parish Government Month and Caddo Day at the Capitol. April also saw Caddo Parish actively participate in Parish Government Month, underscoring the importance of local government in everyday life. During this time, officials and residents gathered in Baton Rouge to mark Caddo Day at the Capitol, advocating for the needs and accomplishments of the parish on a statewide level. In May, we were able to appoint Crystalin Whitaker Nelson as the Poet Lord for Caddo Parish. We also celebrated veteran celebrations as every day is Veterans Day and the 250-year-old United States Army. In June, we were able to roll out the introduction of CaddoReady.org, as well as the Walter B. Jacobs Nature Park. That is definitely a state-of-the-art facility that we cannot wait for everyone to see. But that groundbreaking ceremony was held, signifying an investment in environmental stewardship and family-friendly recreation for future generations. And of course, we were also able to announce SkyWest relocating to Caddo Parish. And economic development reached new heights with SkyWest Airlines key operations to Caddo Parish. This strategic move brings job opportunities, expands transportation access, and affirms Caddo's position as a growing hub in regional logistics and business. As you can see, we've been busy taking care of the business of Caddo Parish, which I confidently call us "the destination location of Northwest Louisiana." I also want to take this opportunity to wish my husband, Mr. Christopher Watts, a happy anniversary on tomorrow of 27 years, 34 long years together, and we're still together. So to you, I say happy anniversary. And to the community, I say have a happy and safe Independence Day. This will conclude my president's report. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That brings us now to a public hearing on zoning ordinances in cases, where we do have one item under this section. And it is a public hearing for ordinance 6549 of 2025. That's an ordinance to amend Volume 2 of the Code of Ordinances of the Parish of Caddo as amended, the Caddo Parish Unified Development Code, relative to unnecessary and inconsistent zoning districts with all their provisions included herein and otherwise provide with respect thereto.
Okay. At this time, I would like to open the public hearing for ordinance 6549 of 2025. Is there anyone here to speak in favor or against this ordinance? Seeing none, I declare this public hearing closed.
Okay. And that brings us now to the public hearing on ordinances, where 12.1 is a, we have several under this. Would you like me to read them all at once?
If you would, please collectively read them, and then I will open up one hearing.
Absolutely. The first item is a public hearing on ordinance number 6547 of 2025. That's an ordinance amending Article 3 of Chapter 19 of the Code of Ordinances relative to the E. Edward Jones Housing Trust Fund to expand the Technical Review Committee and otherwise provide with respect thereto from the Long Range Planning Committee. The next item is a public hearing on ordinance 6548 of 2025, an ordinance amending the budget of estimated revenues and expenditures for the Debt Service Fund and the Capital Outlay Fund to provide an appropriation of $10 million for the construction of a pickleball park and otherwise provide with respect thereto. The next item is a public hearing for ordinance 6550 of 2025. That is an ordinance to deem property surplus and authorize the sale of surplus property owned by the Parish of Caddo and otherwise provide with respect thereto. Followed by a public hearing for ordinance 6551 of 2025, an ordinance declaring certain adjudicated properties to be surplus and authorizing the parish administrator or a designee to sell the Parish of Caddo's tax interest in certain surplus adjudicated properties and otherwise provide with respect thereto. That's in District 3, by the way. The next item is a public hearing on ordinance 6552 of 2025, an ordinance to close and abandon a portion of the 15-foot-wide utility easement in the Northwood Trace subdivision unit number 2 and Section 36 Township 19 North, Range 15 West in the Parish of Caddo and otherwise provide with respect thereto. That is from District 2. And the final item in this section is a public hearing on ordinance 6553 of 2025, an ordinance amending the budget of estimated revenues and expenditures for the Riverboat Fund and the Oil and Gas Fund to provide for an appropriation to Northwest Louisiana Food Bank and otherwise provide with respect thereto.
Right. At this time, I would like to open for a public hearing on the aforementioned ordinances, which were 6547, 6548, 6550, 6551, 6552, and 6553. I will start with the comment cards that I have for Stacy Brown.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair.
Good afternoon.
Commissioners?
Welcome.
Here, I appreciate y'all allowing us to come today to talk a little bit more about the pickleball facilities. As some of you may know, I didn't introduce myself, sorry. Stacy Brown, 629 Spring Street, Shreveport, Louisiana.
Thank you.
As some of you may know, last year, we commissioned a study to review sports tourism and provide us with a strategic plan and facility recommendations. You should have received this last year. But one of the top recommendations in this study was to really concentrate on pickleball and building a facility that would not only be available to local people and to build the sport, but also to drive economic development and economic impact through sports tourism by designing a facility that would host not only local, but regional and national tournaments. I think there have been a number of misconceptions about this project and what it can do for our facility and even how it's funded. I would like to commend the staff for doing a tremendous job of really, truly making this a facility that can drive economic impact. Too often, we see facilities that are beautiful. They're wonderful, and they're great for locals, but they really don't translate into driving economic impact because they are not built to host tournaments. I think earlier, it was mentioned possibly turning other facilities and repurposing courts. Those are all great things for us as locals and help us to bring, compete and learn the sport. However, they don't bring in that economic impact by bringing in people from outside the community to come into Shreveport, Bossier. For one thing, it raises the level of the sport so that our local people can compete in these regional and national tournaments. It builds interest in the sport and makes it bigger in our community. But one of the best things it does by bringing those out-of-town visitors in, it has them staying in hotels, eating in restaurants, going to the gas station, doing their shopping while they're here, also looking at attractions and going to visit them in our community. So not only does it drive that economic impact, it provides tax dollars that can be used for other things. The great thing about the way this facility funding is designed, it's designed to fund itself through those revenue bonds. So it's not taking away from streets and drainage. It's not money that could be used for those things. However, it can drive economic development and impact that can provide for those types of things. So this facility, as I mentioned, they did it right. They talked to the top professionals in pickleball to make sure that the location of the courts was such that it would not only provide great facilities, but looking at the angle of the sun and how the facilities are laid out so that it can really drive that economic development through regional and national tournaments. In just a moment, Sarah Nels, our Director of Sports, will talk to you a little bit more about tournament directors. And they've already heard a little bit about our facility and are interested in going ahead and starting booking that facility. So what a great opportunity for us to be on the front end of a strong, growing trend before that gets overpopulated. So we're also looking forward to, you know, some, there's concern of there are a number of facilities already for pickleball, a few courts here and there. Those can be complementary to this facility. As the sport grows, we will need more than just those. They can also use B for practice, or sometimes a facility may need more than one location because their tournament has grown so large. So we're very excited about this opportunity. And again, thank you for looking at the value of sports tourism in our community and how it can drive economic impact and provide a better quality of life for our citizens.
Thank you, Ms. Stacy. All righty. And next, I have Ms. Sarah Nels. Sarah Nels?
Hello. I'm Sarah Nels, 629 Spring Street, Shreveport, 71101. So my main job duty is actually to generate tourism through sporting events at the Sports Commission. So we have been working with multiple rights holders, which are groups who own events. So we've been working with the Southern Pickleball Association, the United States Pickleball Association, the National Collegiate Pickleball Association, the Professional Pickleball Association Tour, and USA Pickleball. So all of these rights holders, they own events, and they are interested in this facility. We have shown them the renderings, and they are very excited about the opportunity. The nation actually has a shortage of dedicated pickleball facilities because the sport has grown so fast since 2020, especially during COVID. So this would be a great opportunity for us. It would definitely be a sellable asset for our community, and we would be able to bring several tournaments to generate economic impact for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Dr. Shelley Armstrong. Dr. Armstrong, state your name and address for the record. You may proceed.
Hello, I'm Dr. Shelley Armstrong. My address is 602 Somerville Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71115. I'm a resident of the 12 Oaks neighborhood near the Lash YMCA, a mother of two teenage girls, and a strong supporter of fitness, health, wellbeing, and social connections of our citizens here in Caddo Parish. Pickleball is more than just a sport. It brings people together across generations and demographics. It is fun, engaging, and accessible to all people of all skills, making it the most perfect sport for our young and older residents. Our gentleman, Mr. Lawrence, who is retiring, going to the villages. You go to the villages for two reasons, golf and pickleball. They have over 250 pickleball courts in the villages. We can keep our residents here in Shreveport with more pickleball facilities, okay? That is one reason. But we live in a world of isolation and inactivity. These are serious concerns, and pickleball offers a solution. It promotes physical wellness. It keeps our people active. And it promotes a platform for building new friendships and forging meaningful connections. As been mentioned, it is the fastest-growing sport nationwide. This isn't something that our commission wants. It's not something that I want. There have been numerous studies about the service gaps within the master plan, within the recreational analysis over the past few years. And they continue to come back that we need pickleball facilities in our area. This is a service gap been cited over and over and over by external reviewers. Pickleball is obviously very popular in the nation, and it is the future of our community. We have been left behind in many ways in terms of recreation. I have raised my girls, and we have spent weekend after weekend, year after year, in Nakadish, in Stirlington, in Ruston, in Monroe. I spend thousands of dollars in those communities on hotels, on dinner, shopping, at Top Golf, at Main Event, when we could have been doing that back here. And we have an opportunity to not be left behind in this sport. So I ask you to consider this opportunity so that we can become a niche for a pickleball destination, and our people are not going elsewhere to utilize this type of sport. So I ask that we do this for our existing players, that we can attract new players, that we can make this community a more vibrant and engaging place to live and visit. Thank you.
Thank you. Megan McDaniel?
I just wanted to echo everything that has already been said about the pickleball courts.
Megan, if you would, just state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Megan McDaniel, 9527 Maisan, 1115. So I know we had a concerned citizen up here earlier who made some really great valid points. And although those are great points, oftentimes, it's just that we don't actually know the full details. So the funds, we do need to spend money on roads. We do need to spend money on education and all those things. But the funds that are being allocated to the pickleball courts are not, those are not funds that would go towards roads otherwise. It's not like we're taking money out of that pot to put it in the other. So, and also, the suggestion of repurposing old courts is a great idea, but there's been a lot of research done to make sure that the location is premium. Jeffrey Goodman of the YMCA has already mentioned that every day, there's about 1,000 people already coming through the YMCA at the Lash facility. So it's already getting a lot of visibility. Also, I teach classes at the Y, and I can tell you that he mentioned that there's already pickleball games happening at the Y. I can tell you it is over saturated. I tried playing with a friend of mine at the Y, and you literally are just sitting around waiting for your turn to get in. It's like a rotation process. And I was there an hour, and I played one game, one. I mean, there's more demand than there is ability to play. Further, I teach some kid fitness classes at the Y. And when the weather is not great, we bring them indoors, and we'll take them into the gym to have them running around and being active. Well, the pickleball has taken over, and now that's being, the gym is being used more and more for pickleball purposes. And so for some of the kids, you know, it's just, I will say, we do have it at the Y, but it's already kind of taken on its own. And so there is a need to be more opportunity.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in favor or against any of the ordinances? Seeing none, I declare this public hearing closed.
Okay, that brings us to a consideration of zoning ordinances for final passage, where today you have before you ordinance 6549 of 2025. It's an ordinance to amend Volume 2 of the Code of Ordinances of the Parish of Caddo as amended, the Caddo Parish Unified Development Code, relative to unnecessary and inconsistent zoning districts with all their provisions included herein and otherwise provide with respect thereto.
You said 6549? Did you mean 6547?
Forty-nine, I'm sorry. Yeah, no, it is forty-nine.
Forty-nine? Okay.
And the reason for that numbering?
It's out of order.
It's because we had, remember, we had a meeting where there were not two weeks between the two meetings, so we had to forward those items to this meeting.
Got you.
So you do have two, a month worth of ordinances on this agenda.
All right. I have a motion by Parliamentarian Victor Thomas and seconded by Commissioner John Atkins. Parliamentarian Thomas, would you like to speak on your motion?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Atkins? Okay. Seeing no other discussion, please vote.
And that motion carries with 11 in support, none in opposition, and one absent. So that item is adopted, and we'll move forward to ordinances for final passage, where the first one that you have to consider is ordinance number 6547 of 2025. That's an ordinance amending Article 3 of Chapter 19 of the Code of Ordinances relative to the E. Edward Jones Housing Trust Fund to expand the Technical Review Committee.
All right, I have a motion by Parliamentarian Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Carthay. Parliamentarian Thomas, would you like to speak on your motion?
Yes, Madam President, I'm gonna, I'd like to make a motion to englobor and adopt item 14.1, 6547, item 14.3, 6550, items 14.4, 6551, item 14.5, 6552, and item 14.6, 6553. Now that my motion's been seconded, I do want to say that I just, for the interest of the public, I did this simply because there is a very bad storm that is going on right now. And I just, for the sake of time, I did want to go ahead and englobor those items.
Thank you, yes, for being sensitive and making sure that you stated the reason. Okay, seeing no other discussion? Please vote. And I did say that was motion by Parliamentarian Thomas, and it was seconded by Commissioner Ron Carthay. You already had a second on the board.
And that motion carries with 11 in support, none in opposition, and one absent. And the remaining item in that section, I believe, is 14.2, ordinance number 6548 of 2025. Which is an ordinance amending the budget of estimated revenues and expenditures for the debt service fund and the capital outlay fund to provide an appropriation of $10 million for the construction of a pickleball park and otherwise provided with respect thereto.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner John Paul Young and a second by Commissioner John Atkins. Commissioner John Paul Young, would you like to speak on your motion?
Yes, Madam President, very briefly. Pickleball seems to be a super-popular, growing sport. We've under-invested in our recreation and our youth sports and our public amenities here for some time. And I think one of the reasons that people often move away from Caddo Parish is because there's not enough fun stuff to do. And I think this is a fantastic investment to make Caddo Parish a more fun place to live and work and play. And I compliment our administration for coming up with the idea and doing such fantastic research and work to bring it to life.
Thank you. Commissioner Atkins?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm supportive of this project. There's been a great deal of work that's gone into it by the staff. I've reviewed it numerous times on my own. I think operationally, the projections are operationally, the operating revenue should cover not only operating costs, but also the cost of financing. So, if projections are met, it should be a break-even type proposition, meaning there's no additional burden on the balance sheet of the parish to execute this project. You know, I know projections aren't always, you know, don't always come to fruition, but there's a safety net here. If our, if our projections fall short, we still have the economic development component associated with these large, these large tournaments that will inject additional, additional revenue into our economy and help to offset any, any shortfall that may occur on the operational aspects, the number of days on court. And then, lastly, if worse comes to worse and, and we, and neither the operational revenues developed or the economic development revenues developed, we still have economic development, an economic development fund that's currently used to invest in economic development projects that could help us close any gap. So, I don't see any negative impact on our balance sheet, even if our, even if our operational projections fall a little short. So, I think, all in all, I think it's a positive for the community and I'm supportive of the project and I appreciate your support. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Commissioner Gregory Young?
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, I'd like to identify myself with all of the remarks that have been made by Commissioner John Paul Young and Commissioner Atkins. However, one of the first things you learn as being part of a deliberative body is that you have to know how to count votes. And the votes, as I tell of them, we just don't have the votes for this to pass today are due to some of the questions that still remain. And so, instead of, you know, watching this die on the vine, I would prefer that we return it back to the Economic Development Committee and so, we can address some of the questions that still remain outstanding. And so, my motion is to return it to the Economic Development Committee further.
Your substitute motion, sir?
That's my substitute motion, I'm sorry. That's my substitute motion.
Second it.
Okay. I heard a motion and a second and I don't, as you, use your pick, thank you. All right, that was motion by Commissioner Gregory Young and it was seconded by Commissioner Ron Carthon.
Just to be clear, Ms. Madam President, it is a substitute motion?
Yes, it is. It's a motion to amend.
Okay.
That's, that's what I was gonna take care of. Point of order, Madam President. Commissioner Young, you did speak before making your motion. So, thank you for those words, but you will have to get back on the board in order to make.
My mistake, thank you. Appreciate that.
So, he did not already have it on the board as the motion here and the second here? Was that done by the clerk, what I'm looking at? Okay, thank you, all right. So, we'll strike that and we'll allow you to get back on the board to make your amendment to that motion. Now, were you, were you done speaking at this time?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Commissioner Carthon?
Yes, Madam Chair, I would like to make a substitute motion based on the same thing to take this to, back to the Economic Development Committee because I too have many questions that have been given to me by my constituents.
It's second. I have a motion and a second on the board. I have a motion by Commissioner Ron Carthon and I have a second by Parliamentarian Thomas. Now, you can continue speaking, I was just addressing.
That's it, I just, like I said, made the motion to amend and, because there are so many questions and I mean, you know, some people have all the questions, they think. But as I continue to look at this project, and the thing is, $10 million is a lot of money, okay? And the most important thing, I am not against pickleball, let me state that. But I need some additional information before I go spend my constituents, which is the entire parish, $10 million. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner John Paul Young, I'm sorry, before you speak, Commissioner John Paul Young, I would allow the second Parliamentarian Thomas, did you have anything that you would like to add?
Yes and no. I just would also too like to say that I am in support of us having a pickleball facility. Once again, that we continue to receive questions daily, new questions, and a few of those questions have not been satisfied. So, I would like to have, for us to have some further development. I think we've gotten as much information as we can from administration, but I think there are some broader, broader questions that we could, we could definitely discuss.
Thank you. Now, back to Commissioner John Paul Young.
Thank you, Madam President. Sometimes when we have a great idea and we're close to passing it, we delay it because of claims about questions. And sometimes I don't ever really hear those questions. So, I just want to call everyone's bluff and say, write your questions down, please, and bring them to the meeting because we want to answer them in writing properly. And if you don't have questions written down, that'll be embarrassing, thank you.
Right, Commissioner Blake?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to say I'm pretty disappointed. We've just heard from people in this community that are desperate for us to have opportunity. I'm a business owner. For 26 years, I've watched our community pass opportunity over and over again to be a destination location, just like such. We had a woman, Ms. Button, who came to talk about the Ark-La-Tex Gazette and appealing to Generation Y and Z. These are the generations that we're gonna miss. We have an opportunity now to make a great economic investment for the future of our community. And I'm gonna say a catchphrase, that the math is mathing on this. When I first came on the commission, this was discussed, presented, and everyone was on board on the economic committee or the long-range committee. This is so exciting, this opportunity for our community. It will help all of the people in our community. I, like Commissioner John Paul, request everyone come to the table with your question so they can be answered thoroughly. No money is coming out of our taxpayers' pocket. In fact, this is going to bring great tax to our community. I have a 26-year-old and a 24-year-old that I had to drive 60 miles to spend thousands of dollars, like the woman from 12 Oaks. It's time we really think about the growth of this community and come together. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Commissioner Gregory Young?
Thank you, Madam President. Okay. Great saying, said it right. Everybody was on board, almost everybody. There's only one person that I'm aware of that's around this horseshoe, that spoke eloquently against this project. And I respect him for that. He let his feelings known. But almost to a person, there was really no dissent. And I don't know what happened between then and now. But I know that people in my district, they didn't elect me to do something for the people in the opposite side of the parish. They didn't. I mean, I know that, I've been living there for 30-something years. I've been part of that community for almost 50 years. But yet, as I promised last year, what I would do this year is try to reach across the aisle and try to accommodate someone else's vision, not just my own. And so, in the spirit of reaching out and getting beyond myself, I supported this initiative. I had many, many questions. All of this, it wasn't in long range, it was in Economic Development Committee. I had many, many questions. I had many, many reservations. And everybody who attended the meetings, who were members of, of the committee, they had an opportunity to ask whatever questions they had. We had several meetings. We had the gentleman from the Y, we had the consultant that we hired, we had the director of Parks and Recreation, we had our attorney, we had our administrator, everyone was there. And then, when it got down, down the road somewhat, I invited all of my colleagues who were not on the committee to come and ask their questions, whatever questions they have. You know, that was an opportunity to, to address it. Now, you know, we're not gonna grow as a community if we're only concerned about what's going on in your part of the world. I mean, we are witnessing debalkization of our country right now, where everybody's going to their own corner. And I just want to remind you all of this cliche that's very, very pertinent and relevant right now. United we stand, divided we fall. As I spoke of earlier, the easiest thing to do is to lose. Anybody can check out. And, and I can't help but remember, as a, as a 10th grader playing varsity basketball over at Airline, we had like a 40-point lead. We had a 40-point lead in the second quarter, we went into halftime. The coach told us that were starting and said, "Look, y'all didn't get dressed. Take off your basketball uniforms, put on, put on your clothes and y'all just relax." And boy, we were sitting out there in the back in the third quarter, came and we started hearing a lot of cheering and we started talking about, you know, girls or teachers, you know, what teenagers talk about. And boy, we heard the buzzers, so that was the end of the third quarter. Then it got louder and louder. I mean, it kept getting louder, we thinking, man, they must be blowing the doors off this place, our teammates. And lord, we heard the buzzers go out again and screaming and hollering. And the next thing we saw was our teammates, you know, the second and third stringers coming in with their head down. They were crying, I had never seen these people cry. They blew a 40-point lead. The easiest thing to do is to lose. It doesn't take any effort to lose. It takes work to win. If we want this to be a winning community that other people, want other people to be a part of, we gotta figure out how to work together. We, we got to figure that out or we're just wasting our time. But I know for me, I didn't come here to warm my bench. I came here to be involved and to move our community forward. And God knows, I'm not here to say that pickleball is that thing that we should all be rallying around, but we at least got to be intellectually honest. State what your reasons are, put them up there on the board. But we, we gotta cut out this vacillating and pretending that it's this or it's that, and if this is just something you don't want, then say that. But stop making excuses. We're supposed to be the leaders in the community, we're supposed to be the adults. We have got to figure this out. And I would encourage my peers, whether it's to pickleball or maybe some other issues, look, let's make it work. As I stated, I'm gonna get through, I promise. But as I stated early in the week in the meeting that we had, those other basketball players, I've been on track teams, football teams, baseball teams. Those kids on the other side, they weren't marginally less skillful than we were. We couldn't jump higher than them or hit harder than them. We won or lost based on the camaraderie that we had as a group. It's what happens in the locker room, it's what happens in practice. That's how you get your outcomes out there in the field, that's how we win. We have got to figure out, if you got somebody on this commission that you don't like, you need to pick that phone up and talk to that person. You need to keep it in the locker room. Too much of what goes on here is out there on Facebook and it's out there in the media and it's very divisive. We're not gonna get anything done if we don't figure out how to work together. And that we cannot fight old battles. Almighty God, which most of us serve, is not in the business of repairing the past. We can't fix it, we can't fix what has happened in the past. We gotta figure out how to move forward because that's what leaders do. Ayew?
Thank you. Commissioner, Parliamentarian Victor Thomas?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Commissioner Young, for those words. You really summed up a lot of what I wanted to say. But I want to state on the record that I have always been a yes vote for pickleball. I've expressed to administration that my concern is not an allegiance to any one of us 12, to administration, my allegiance is to those who elected me. While we initially had questions, we belabored those questions amongst each other in committee meetings, back and forth, we had all our questions answered. At this juncture, we have citizens who have presented questions. And until those are answered for us, some of these members of this commission want to have those questions answered so that we can relay that back to our citizens. That's what's most important here, is so that you all have an understanding of this pickleball complex. For instance, the gentleman spoke earlier about the number of pickleball, of pickleball courts that we have now. But as you can see later on, it was relayed that the reason for this is so that we can have tournaments here. It's not just so we can play pickleball, it's so that we can make sure that we are the destination location nationally for pickleball. And while some of us are supportive of it, there are citizens who have questions. And until those questions are answered, that's the reason for this. And I want you guys to please make sure that all of your citizens' questions are prepared, that you have them with you as well when we take this back to the committee and discuss it. I've said this before, it's easy for us to, the most important for us is thing is for us to have a respect for each other, to have a, hold each other in a high regard. I know that sometimes it seems that everybody does not want to play on a winning team. Some would rather us tank and lose as opposed to working together. But I echo your sentiment, Commissioner Young, that it's time, we have six months left in this year. We have less than two years left in this term. We have got to start working together. We have got to start making investments in our community that are gonna bring, that are gonna bring our parish forward. I'm committed to that, I hope that my colleagues are committed to that. And it's time to work, y'all. We gotta quit playing this back-and-forth game of red and blue, red light, green light, stop. I'll say it once again, y'all, we're paying attention to what comes out of our mouth, pay attention to what happens on their board and how these people are voting. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Carthon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As we continue to vacillate, articulate, pontificate concerning this respective article that we're talking about, have we ever thought about going to the community and letting them talk, let them ask questions? Because as previously stated, I get questioned quite a bit about this pickleball and $10 million. I know what I know, but I don't know all the questions, not all the answers that my constituents ask of me. So, as I said before, I have no problem with pickleball, but I do have a problem when my constituents are continuing to question me about spending $10 million. And I would like to recommend that this particular town, we do a road show, dog and pony show, whatever you choose to call it, and go to respected communities and let them tell us what we, what they want. See, the thing is, again, it's real easy for me to sit here and make a decision about $10 million, which I've never had in my life, okay? But the thing is, again, if I'm not mistaken, there's a place called Caddo Parish where we have constituents throughout that should have a voice in this. It's easy for any one of the 12 of us to say, yes, 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 no, no, no. Quite a few of us do that, quite a bit. But the point being is when my constituents, and again, it's not gonna be a hundred percent, I get that. But when I have constituents, particularly business people, asking me questions about this and I can't answer, and they tell me this makes no sense to them, and they have been in business for quite some time and are doing very well, I am concerned at that particular time. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner John Paul Young, you've already spoken. Um, Commissioner Stefan Jones.
Call for the question.
Second.
Have some clarification now.
We're voting.
This vote before you right now is to call for the question, if that's what.
Thank you.
This is just whether to end discussion. And that motion carries with nine in support, two in opposition, and one absent. So we move to the motion at hand, which is uh, to remand this item to the Economic Development Committee. A motion from Commissioner Cothran, seconded by Commissioner Thomas.
Okay. Yes.
For those listening, would you remind the body what hap- you know, what we're doing here?
Commissioner Atkins, could you get your mic on?
Sorry.
Would you remind uh, all those that are listening, you know, the process here about a substitute motion? And if you voted for or against substitute, substitute motion, what happens next? If, you know.
Sure.
Thank you.
So what Commissioner Atkins is asking me to make sure that I explain is that at this point, we are voting on the motion to amend, which included moving this item back to committee, which would be the Economic Development Committee. If this motion passes, if it carries, then we will not vote on the original motion. If it fails, then we will vote on the original motion.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Commissioners Young, Greg Young, John Atkins, and Lazarus, it still needs to, there we go, thank you. All right, and that item carries with eight in support, uh, three in opposition, and one absent. Um, so that item will be uh, sent to the Economic Development Committee for additional discussion.
It sounds like it's a lot of additional discussion, yes. Okay.
What's that?
I was just saying, it sounds like there's a lot of additional discussion that needs to happen. I think that was a great call by the body.
Okay, thank you. Uh, that brings us to, we have no zoning ordinances or uh, or or regular ordinances to introduce today. So your next item is to uh, adopt work session minutes. You do have two uh, times worth of work session minutes. Again, that's due to the fact that your uh, previous meeting uh, happened um, within a two week span of the.
All right. I have a motion.
Than traditional.
By Vice President Everson and a second by Parliamentarian Thomas. Vice President Everson, would you like to speak on your motion?
No ma'am.
Parliamentarian Thomas?
Um, yes, I'd like to englobo and adopt items seventeen point one and seventeen point two, both um, minutes of the June sixteenth and June thirtieth work session.
Second, okay. It's been moved in second to englobo and adopt both work session minutes of June sixteenth and June thirtieth, twenty twenty five work sessions. Seeing no discussion, please vote.
And that that motion carries with eleven in support, none in opposition, uh, and brings us now to uh, new business. We have no resolutions or old business to consider, so new business uh, brings us to twenty point two, authorizing the administrator to pursue the implementation of the West Caddo early voting site through the Secretary of State's office for use during the twenty twenty six election cycle, and to proceed with the implementation of the approved North Caddo site uh, as soon as possible.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor by Commissioner John Atkins and second by Commissioner Ron Carther. Commissioner Atkins, would you like to speak on your motion?
I think we've all discussed this uh, in detail. We do have the, sorry.
We uh, we did receive a letter um, from the Secretary of State's office stating uh, the reasons why they had uh, recommended that we pursue the North Caddo project first. I think everybody has that on their desk. Um, obviously, you know, as I stated on Monday, to me, North Caddo is a bird in the hand, and I don't want to give up a bird in the hand um, while we have it. I am certainly supportive of a early voting site in West Caddo as well, but I just think we should pursue this North Caddo site first. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Carther.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too am not opposed to the North Caddo uh, early voting, but at this particular time, I would like to make a motion, uh, amend the motion to go to the either long range of the, what was it, Public Safety Committee at this particular time. There's some additional information.
Commissioner, um, Carther, I'm sorry, but you spoke before you made the motion, so you'll have to give back on the board to either restate your motion or someone else can do it.
Thank you, Madam President.
Okay. All right, and I see that someone had it clear for a second, so if you would put the board back to where it was. Okay? Commissioner Carther, were you s- done speaking? Cause you still have the floor. You just can't make the motion.
So you were the second on the motion with Atkins, so therefore that that nullified what you had.
Okay, even though I can't put the motion out there at this particular time, and hopefully someone does. The thing is, we we have this paperwork, but the thing is, we have not talked to Mr. Sibley as of yet to actually find out what can or cannot happen. I understand the process and what we received from the state, and I'm not opposed to it going up north. As a matter of fact, I support it one hundred. But the thing is, again, uh, those people have to drive forty-five hour down here to early vote, I get that. But the thing is, I want to ensure, make sure that we're doing the proper thing as a result in talking with Mr. Sibley before we move forward. Uh, because the thing is, is is uh, Commissioner Young said a few minutes ago, we gotta move together, okay? And to put something on pause for a couple of weeks that has been approved already at the state is not gonna kill anything. And I'm definitely not in the business of killing it, okay? Because that's one of the things, and particularly when we talked about why we wanted it up north. We talked about Todd, this being particularly in his memory, okay? And Todd was very important to me, even though we weren't here together very long. But the thing is, again, I have a respect for that man that I would never, ever forget from around his horseshoe. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Carther. Vice President Everson?
I'd like to make a substitute motion.
State your motion.
I would like to uh, remand to the Public Safety Committee the uh, implementa- the request of the administration to proceed with the West Caddo as well as the North Caddo early voting site. If I could get a second?
I've already seconded it.
Okay. What we have here, of course, we received a lot of information today, ladies and gentlemen. And there's a lot of information that you all aren't really privy to. There are some things that happened prior to this decision being made. There are some things with some criterias that we were not aware of. There's a lot of innuendo and a lot of mudslinging and and disinformation being out on Facebook and all that, which I don't follow. I don't pay that any attention. However, uh, send this back to the committee. I'm working on data. We have what we have here. There's a si- situation with some con- some uh, correspondence that we received from the uh, from the uh, Secretary of State's office that doesn't chime the same with what we have in mind. So if you really wanna find the facts out, let's bring this back to the committee and we put everything on the table, plus some new data that's being brought, and we can start out in the same direction. Not against that, no problem whatsoever. So I'd ask that you would support this measure. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Crackman?
Yeah, I'd like to make another substitute motion to the likeness of Ron Cothran's, Commissioner Cothran's, if I could get a second on this.
A second. I'm, I'm sorry, you need to state your motion? You didn't make a motion?
Yeah, the motion to move it to the Long Range Planning Committee as written.
Okay.
A, a second?
Okay, so your motion is, uh, you're amending the motion that was made by Vice President Everson from the Public Safety Committee to the Long Range Committee? Is that your motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and would you like to speak on your motion? And it was seconded by um, Commissioner Blake, which I see this on the board.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, I know everybody's kinda looking at me a little curious that I would agree to move this back to a committee. However, uh, there are a lot with the documents that don't line up.
Excuse me, Commissioner Carther, I think you're, you're, I mean, crack me, your mic. I don't think they can hear you.
The Secretary of State's, thank you. The Secretary of State's uh, address and location doesn't match the same as what we had submitted for Savage Street. And um, I'm pretty sure that we really need to talk to Dale Sibley because according to the Secretary of State, he's gonna need seven to fourteen employees, one full time. Uh, there there's a lot of moving parts here, as much as, as much as it pains me to want to move this to committee. Uh, I I do think it's incredibly necessary because there's a lot of contradictory uh, facts in all these papers. Uh, however, I do think that the Long Range Planning Committee uh, makes more sense as far as the criteria over the Public Safety Committee. It just seems more appropriate, and um, I would appreciate everybody's support in sending it there. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no, okay, Vice President Everson?
Call for a question on the motion.
All right, a second. We're voting on calling for the question, or does that pass by acclamation? All right. Passes by acclamation, so the first one that we'll be voting on is the motion that was stated by Commissioner Crackman and seconded by Commissioner Blake. And this is to move to a different committee from which was originally um, requested by Vice President Everson and seconded by the chair to move to the Public Safety Committee, which is the committee that it came out of. So this is a different motion to move it to a different committee, which would be the Long Range Planning Committee.
John, excuse me, nevermind, thank you.
Okay, and that motion uh, does carry with eight in support, two in opposition, and two absent. Um, so that uh, item will uh, be uh, remanded to the Long Range Planning Committee. Um, and that brings us now to uh, twenty point three, uh, which is a discussion of ratified special resolutions.
All right. Um, this was one of the items that I wanted to make sure that I discussed. Um, let me make the motion first. Now really, just because this is a discussion item, I really don't think that I need a motion or a second to.
I I don't believe you do.
For the ratified special resolutions.
Like it's just a discussion item, so you don't have to take action.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, I just wanted to make sure that, I stated this on record, Commissioner John Paul Young is out of the chamber, but this was one of the things that I wanted to address, as it was mentioned earlier by Attorney Frazier. There has been a lot of conversations about special resolutions. So I wanted to make sure that we could clearly define what special resolutions are. They are ceremonial greetings, they're acknowledgements, they're commemorations or recognitions of people, places, events, and observations throughout Caddo Parish. They're only mentioned in the commission bylaws to name a section of the agenda that is set aside for their presentation separate from regular resolutions. There is no formal definition of them or outlining of a process for adopting them. There was a discussion in a Personnel Policy and Procedure Committee meeting in twenty twenty four about including an amendment to the bylaws clarifying that the Commission Clerk's Office is responsible for the drafting of special resolutions, and it was suggested to include it during future discussions of bylaw edits, but no additional action was recommended at that time. The bylaws were amended in twenty sixteen to say that all ordinances and resolutions must be written by the parish attorney. But special resolutions had always been and continue to be drafted by the Commission Clerk's Office. Special resolutions are often used to recognize dynamic situations, special events, funerals, victories, et cetera, to be timely. They have been created for presentation, sometimes being adopted after the fact or ratified, or in many cases, not added to the agenda or in the permanent record. This practice of not being included on the agenda was more frequent prior to the current Commission Clerk and staff. In fact, recent years have seen an increase in the number of special resolutions being addressed on the agenda, being ratified, and being presented during meetings in lieu of the less documented previous practices of simply issuing the special resolutions, proclamations, specul- special recognitions, and allowing them to be presented without any documentation during meetings. The placement of these items on the agenda evolved under the previous Commission Clerk. Prior to Mr. Hopkins, many of the special resolution sections of the agenda were completely empty, and it was rare to hear mention of these items. The practice of including them has led to a wider awareness of them, which is appreciated by some and maligned by others. Regardless, the documentation of these special resolutions has increased. Thought there is still, though there is still no policy in place setting guidelines other than when during the course of the meeting, they should be addressed. Recent speculation has heavily criticized the idea of presenting a special resolution before its adoption, but here are just a few examples from the recent items of twenty twenty five that were presented before adoption. In July, of course, you know of the special resolutions of the hundred and ninetieth anniversary. Before that, there was a resolution for Patrina Jenkins' bus stop dedication, Marial Carter Underwood, and Evening with the Arthurs, the LSU's Pilots baseball team. Reverend Cleonis Odom and Danny Williams were adopted by the commissioners, all twelve, as well as May, and the list could go on all the way through this year of twenty twenty five. In addition to that, this is just a simple explanation of a lot of the rhetoric that we are hearing about special resolutions. If you would like more information, you are more than welcome to contact the Commission Clerk's Office. Thank you. Parliamentarian Thomas?
Thank you, Madam President. My um, comment was not for this moment, it was for a previous moment and the board didn't clear. But thank you for your, for the opportunity to speak.
Okay. Communicates and reports, next item.
That brings us to communicates and reports.
All right. Vice President Everson?
Yes, I'd like to have the Commission Clerk to prepare.
Could you put your mic?
Prepare a resolution or a proclamation of whatever is fitting to recognize the United States Coast Guard birthday, August fourth, seventeen ninety. And we have it for presentation uh, on uh, well, on the, on the work session for August the fourth, and of course, former presentation on August the seventh. Chairman, did you say you want to call a meeting on?
Microphone, please.
I would be calling.
Mike.
I would be calling a Long Range Committee meeting, but I wanna get with the CEO first because we need to get uh, Mr. Sibley here so we can get some of this stuff cleared up real good before we uh, run on down that road.
In August?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right. Commissioner, um, you still have.
Relative to that, are you finished?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, okay, you couldn't be good, couldn't go ahead and and do your date and your time, and then we worked toward it? I mean, you got over a month.
I could, but again, I I need Mr. Sibley here and I need, need her to get with Mr. Sibley, find out when it's gonna be. I mean, it's not that big of a deal. Once we find out from Mr. Sibley when he could be here, Jeff could put it out.
All right. Vice President Everson, that was it? All right. Commissioner Blake?
Thank you, Madam President. After the past few weeks, I sat down and wrote out something that I would like to uh, to say about everything that's occurred. We've just heard that three commissioners have said that their districts have constituents that have answers, I mean, questions that they want answered. And the same thing has happened to um, some of the other commissioners. And I think that if anything comes of this meeting in the past few weeks, it's that I hope that we all should remain vigilant to staying aware of what is occurring within our local government. Small missteps and mistakes have big impacts and misfortune. However, if we are willing to work together, however, if we're willing to work together using our best practices with Robert's Rules of Order and to follow our open meetings laws, we can focus on the needs and the wants of our constituents and grow with our community. There's other things that I thought I wanted to say, but I really would like to see us come together and have some questions to how we've been operating our resolutions and our special resolutions and have them answered. I've called legal, I've called our administrator, I've called our clerk with the questions. And I think that it's apparent that we don't have a clear path of how to handle them. And so I think that it's a pretty fair statement to say, let's find- And so I think that it's a pretty fair statement to say, let's find out a way to make that happen, get it on paper. If rules were broken, let's figure that out. If we need to create a path, let's make it happen. I feel like this is a really serious matter, that we do work together and find a way to communicate so that the citizens of Caddo Parish trust us to make the decisions for the questions that they have so that we can invest into this community. Thank you very much.
Mr. Clerk, I also would like that statement that I read included in the minutes verbatim and also the rest of it that I did not read and include the link as well as the citizens are able to click it and see all of the other commissioners who has also presented those resolutions.
Yes, ma'am, I believe that is available on the electronic agenda right now.
Thank you.
Commissioner Thomas, you on the board?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Anyone else?
Stefan Johnson.
Okay.
I just want to thank you, thank Madam President, for initiating that meeting in which we will be able to clarify our resolutions and our special resolutions. I'm so glad that she mentioned that and that hopefully Commissioner Blake's concerns will be answered in that moment. That's why I'm glad she did say that prior to, that we will be having that discussion regarding our special resolutions. I do want to just remind our public that it's very important for us to hear your comments. You can always submit a comment card online. I want to reiterate that if you go to caddo.gov and go to any of our agendas, you can click on there, and there is a link for you to submit a comment card online. What you see in this chamber is only a small representation of your voices, and we definitely want to hear them. So I just want to remind you all to please fill out your citizens' comments cards and make sure that you are signing up for Caddo Ready. I don't know if we can get, I know we're about to leave, but can we share that again on Facebook and in social media, especially with the storm that's going on today? I know we all received an alert, and it seems that the storm is much more serious than what we alerted, so can we get everybody signed up for Caddo Ready? Y'all, to the public, please sign up so that you can get that information. Thank you.
CaddoReady.org.
Commissioner Jones?
CaddoReady.org.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Just wanted all of us to keep in our prayers the family of the firefighters in Idaho who lost their lives to ceaseless violence. This is just another example of where we are as a nation, and we just need to take matters like this much more serious. I am of the firm belief if it had not been for the grace of God, there go I. And so I have a heart for those in public service who have laid their lives on the line to make sure that we are all safe. And I'm pretty sure when those gentlemen went to work that day, they were most certainly not expecting to lose their lives, and their families were probably expecting them to come back home. And so as you get ready to celebrate with your family tomorrow, please keep those, families of those firefighters in your prayers. Thank you.
Commissioner Crackman?
Thank you. Yeah, you know, we sit up here and we talk about, don't believe all the rhetoric that you hear about whatever, and, you know, and I know that I have been a very strong voice about these resolutions from day one, no doubt about it. And I have been on the radio left and right. And, you know, whenever you have the majority of this body that put their name on a piece of paper that represents the whole of this horseshoe, and the minority of this horseshoe knows nothing about it, something's wrong. And if we have to redefine things in the bylaws, or if we have to change the bylaws or whatever we're doing in this meeting, then obviously something was broken, or we wouldn't be changing them. What, you know, what I would appreciate and what's not going to happen is we just follow the damn rules that exist. That would be kind of neat. And some of these other resolutions, special resolutions, proclamations, letters of support, whatever, who's to say that some of the people of the minority wouldn't want to be a part of those? I would suggest that folks submit those resolutions in a timely manner. I mean, I know it's difficult to do whenever we're writing fifteen of them a week, but it's possible. Now, we talk about togetherness and divisiveness and all this other, and getting into our feelings, and it's okay on one side and not the other. Well, I'm not hearing it, I'm not having it. We can change all the rules we want to, but we had to abide by the rules that existed whenever they were broken. And, you know, if it comes down hard on this body or the majority or whatever, then that's just what it is. But when a citizen goes over the speed limit, doesn't pay us taxes, doesn't abide by our ordinances, doesn't follow zoning codes, we put the hammer on them. God knows I had a citizen that got tried criminally for a storage building. We should be the standard. And if we don't have to follow the rules, then why do the citizens? Don't pay your taxes and see what happens. We have rules for a reason. We have open meetings laws for a reason. We should abide by them. We shouldn't be changing bylaws. We should follow what we have. You can call me whatever you want to. You can call it rhetoric all you want to, but it's black and white. It's in our Caddo Code of Ordinances. Thank you.
Commissioner Thomas again, well, Greg Young, you hadn't spoken in this round. Commissioner Young, and then Mr. Thomas.
And I'll be very, I'll be very brief. I'm not in disagreement with anything that's been said. I just want to say that as someone who was born a minority, those in the minority now, all you're getting is just a little bit of glimpse of what I've been going through for almost sixty-eight years. And I yield back.
Okay, Commissioner Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I just want to say for the record, dispelling any rhetoric that has been stated in here, I do think we've made it very clear through legal and our president's statement that there was an absence of clear language that defines our special resolutions. I think it's important for this body to work together to be able to identify and craft that language because it did not exist. There are some things that we can discuss in fully, in more detail with each other, but I don't think that we are going to sit here and allow us, this body or the public to be privy to misinformation, for the public to be privy to be receiving rhetoric instead of the truth. A lot of things get stated and there aren't challenged, and we allow them to go on, we allow them to get spliced and put all on Facebook. We allow that information to go on radio and everything else, and we try to have decorum and not challenge it. But that stops. We can no longer do that because we've seen how that spirals out of control. We can say that we're for togetherness, but yet people that are together don't go off and do, I'm going to reserve that. But once again, for the public, it was not clear regarding resolutions. That's why this body is going to take the steps forward, and I hope that we can work together to clearly identify and craft that language regarding special resolutions, regarding all items as it pertains to our bylaws. Thank you.
Commissioner Blake?
Thank you, Vice President Everson. I don't want to sit up here and debate this issue, but I want to share a thought that because we are under an investigation with the Louisiana... I love that people are walking away because you don't want to hear the truth, that this matters to everybody. There are things that we're not supposed to discuss. But I would like to discuss that the additional resolutions that were done seemed very disrespectful when we were in the middle of investigation, and we just heard that people want answers, questions answered for their constituents with the same thing as occurring for us. And it's baffling that Commissioner Crackman brought up a point that there are times where, when people are left in the dark, which seems at times intentional, people might want to be involved in a decision or a resolution, or at least an awareness so that we can share the information to our constituents. Example, I would have loved to have been a part of recognizing Mayor Hussey and the Strand, both of which matter greatly to myself personally and to many people that I represent in all of Caddo Parish. And so these matters, as we can see, those that felt it important or non-important, what's happening here? I will continue to do it right because it's right, and I will try to follow the rules that I'm aware of, and I will do my best to follow the Robert's Rules, and I will try to handle myself respectfully even when it's not done so to me. Thank you. I hope everyone has a big and beautiful, wonderful Fourth of July, which, by the way, I've always said, "big and beautiful" before it became the bill. Thank you.
All righty. I see no other person. Did I entertain a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.